Only because I ran a red light.
At this meeting, turn.
Oh, you did?
I suppose, yeah.
That's not good.
Just buried.
I apologize for being a little late. I was thinking the meeting was at 10 o'clock. Instead, it's at 9:41 or something like that, I guess, so.
We always still start in that.
So.
My gathering is nine thirty.
Yeah, that's right.
That's a trick my family uses, actually.
Okay. Is this for me? All right.
Yes.
We have a clerk up here today, or we don't have a clerk up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, workshop's going on, need that. All right. Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission Legislative Workshop, November 13th, 2024. At this time, please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise with me for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Your worshipful Creator, your hands open wide, satisfy the needs of every living being. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we remember the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Commissioner Seth Waitman?
Here.
Commissioner Cameron Sorkey?
Present.
Commissioner E. Dager?
Nobody called that yesterday.
Commissioner Kate Mary Ile?
I had to.
Here.
I didn't catch it yesterday.
Okay, do we have airtime or anything? Actually, there's still Thursday. Somebody called it yesterday, so that's right. All right. May it be known, we have a quorum present, and all five commissioners are here for the meeting today. Today, we are discussing the 2025 legislative priorities. We'll go over policy proposals and funding initiative proposals. At this time, turn it over to Ralph Lehrer, our Governmental Affairs Officer, to go over the proposals. Excuse me.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, I'm going to kind of like go over and do an overview, give you some direction of what we're hoping today, and then we'll get into the proposals. So, we ask the organization like we do every year to come back and give us a list of projects, any policies that need changing, that impact their work, and then funding initiative requests that they would seek. We also reach out to you all every year during the summer for those same issues, and you supply those back. And that's what we did this year. But then we had two hurricanes, and we then had to go back and look, and I'm going to ask the county administrator, Mike Carbala. He gave the organization a different challenge after those two hurricanes, and I just wanted to let him tell you so we can prop this up as we get ready for the discussion.
Thank you, Ralph. So, after the hurricanes, we've had some discussions with members of our legislative delegation, walking in. Obviously, there are some things that are working in Pasco County's favor, and we were looking at certain types of projects. However, we do believe that there will be some form of hurricane impacting things that will come forward, and responding to the hurricanes and emergency services and resiliency are going to be things that are, I think, key in this session. And so, ask the team to also kind of come back with, what are your thoughts on how do we improve our response to this, not only this storm, but future storms? And what are things that we can do to make our community a little more resilient? So, we've got a longer list than usual when it comes to the appropriations column, but these are things that, you know, our team believes would help us bounce back, recover, and respond better to future storms. So, that was a challenge to the organization. So, that list is probably a little bit longer than what you're used to seeing, but there's some really good stuff in there. There's some things that I think that we really need to be considering, so thank you, Ralph.
So, what my hope is today is we'll go through these. I'll have staff come up, make presentations, answer any questions that you may have. Then if you all have any additional proposal ideas that you would like us to maybe consider, we'll address those issues, and then we'll go into the funding initiatives, same thing, go through those. You all can take notes. I also will give you some information about which districts those fall in within your own commission districts, the projects, and also the legislators, which districts those would fall in. So, as we go through those, I'll give you that information for your notes. My goal is today, we won't have to finalize our list of priorities, but I would like to whittle these down, you know, pare these down. And so, what we're doing is, the next step, on December 16th, we have a workshop scheduled with our legislative delegation. That's going to be over in New Porichee, the West Pasco Government Center. We'll have a smaller pared-down list of what we hopefully see the delegation address. But this gives them, and you all, a chance to interact. It'll be our first time having a workshop with them, and find out if we're on the same page, you know? Do they have changes they'd like us to make, some things taken off or added on? We can do that. Then we will go to print and have those ready as we prepare for the legislative delegation. That being said, I do want to kind of mention some dates for you all to consider. The Florida Association of Counties, they're in their, they're right now in the same process that we are. They're trying to figure out their legislative priorities. They already had a policy and innovative meeting earlier this summer. Pasco County submitted some policies that are on our list and discussed that, but they're meeting again December 4th and 6th, where they will decide their priorities for the coming session. The next date I want to bring up again is December 16th, the board workshop with our legislative delegation. Last night, the delegation picked the date for the legislative delegation. That will be January 7th, 2025, over at the PHSC West Pasco Campus. And then, March 4th, session begins. So with that, let's go ahead and go right into the policy proposals. And the first one we have up is the county inmate medical health cost. I have Chief Jenkins and Robert Hill to discuss that particular policy.
Chief Jenkins, Pasco Corrections. So, we discussed this up last year with regards to the high cost of inmate medical. And of course, our inmate medical contract is exceptionally high, and $2.25 million of that contract is for off-site medical care. So, there is a statute, Department of Corrections statute, that allows the DOC to benefit of having a cap of 110% Medicare rates on all outside inmate medical costs. Currently, our vendor negotiates the cost of inmate care for outside hospitals, specialty care, and that could range from 125% of Medicare rate to further if, in fact, that specialty care is very limited within the county. So, St. Lucie County has proposed and had adopted a local bill which caps their inmate medical cost at 110%, and so that's what we are looking to propose.
A hundred percent, you know, for this one. Do we have, if we were to get capped 110, do you have an idea of the savings that would be for the citizens?
I don't currently. This provider is new, so it's a little hard to make that determination just yet.
And is it in our contract with them that if we're able to get this capped, they still continue as our provider, or do we have to go back out to business?
So, it would, they would still remain our provider. It would allow us the opportunity to go back and potentially reduce our contractual costs because that $2.25 million is currently built within the contract. If we do not spend all of that outside medical cap, a portion of that does get reimbursed back to the county, but we believe it would give us an opportunity to go back and negotiate that contract with our provider.
Yeah.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Ralph. For any of the lawyers in the room, why wouldn't this be a statewide initiative for all the counties that were on jails?
Well, I think you're going to see some other ones do this.
Like, blinded it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. Pause. That's, I think that that was the approach we took in the past. It does, Ralph and I have had this conversation, this does seem to be not what a local bill is designed to do, but St. Lucie County got it through and didn't, my understanding is, didn't face the lobbying arm of the hospitals, which is what has happened to the general bills when they have been proposed.
Well, as often as we've helped the hospitals here recently, my expectation is they would be a partner in this scenario and not work against it.
But it's not, it's not just our hospitals. If you open it up to a statewide general legislation, it's every hospital in the state that would be affected by this because everyone would have the same cap on it. So, I think it was our thought that we'd see if it would pass as a local bill, and if somebody raised the issue of it could be converted to general legislation if it got legs.
So, Mr. Seisider is correct. So, this is run as a separate, as a general bill in the past. I think the last time that they attempted to try, and Florida Association of the Counties also led the charge on this, was in 2012. It's the lobbying arm of the Hospital Association that fought this. This is really a fairness issue, is what we've been arguing. The state already has this cap in all of their correctional facilities, but we don't have that same 110% cap. So, we proposed this, Pasco County, to bring this up at the Policy and Innovative Conference this summer. When I did that, St. Lucie, my counterpart, reached out to me and said, "Guess what? Last year, we passed a local bill, same issue, only impacts our county and the hospitals within," and we had that pass. I said, "Why not? Might as well crawl before you can walk." And it addresses our concern if we can get that done. But as Mr. Seisider did bring up, if this is an issue that we want to expand and we see it has legs, it could turn into a general bill, but let's go ahead and at least get the protection for our taxpayers so we can have a savings in Pasco County.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, I just wanted to point a clarification, and maybe Bobby Chief or Ralph. If it is passed as a local bill, and so I think that's the right course of action because we have good relationships here, that would only apply to hospitals within Pasco County. So, if somebody gets shipped to Tampa General for whatever reason, would that So if somebody gets shipped to Tampa General for whatever reason, would that protection apply?
The way it's written, and I'll ask Robert Hale, he drafted the legislation looking at St. Lucie County. St. Lucie County only focused on hospitals within their county. Mr. Yell, if you can discuss, I know you did put in Hillsborough County.
So, thank you, Robert Hale, from the county attorney's office. The way I drafted the proposed local bill, it's very similar to the Department of Corrections and to St. Lucie County. I included Hillsborough County in there as well. I know a lot of our inmates are shipped to other counties and primarily Hillsborough County for hospital visits and specialty services. I am not entirely sure ultimately how that will play out. I didn't see any prohibition against it, if not impacting, it's not impacting Hillsborough County, it's impacting their medical providers in Hillsborough County. So the short answer is I believe so, but I'm not a hundred percent sure.
And then if we did include and leave that word in there, I think staff in local government, which this bill is only heard in the House, so House members would sponsor the local bill, and the Senate does not have a companion bill. If it passes out of the House, all local bills then go to consent calendar in the Senate, but where I'm going with that is the staff would then tell us at the beginning, once they look at the language, and say, we may have to remove that Hillsborough, which we're willing to do. I mean, again, it's a start for Pasco County to at least address the hospitals within our county to give us that cap.
Any other questions?
No. Number two.
All right, take it. The next one is the 911 fees.
I don't even know if we need an explanation on this.
We don't, but at least to tell the savings, I do have Amy Lee Farrell to come up and tell us the savings that we could see if we were able to get this passed.
Hi. So my understanding is Pinellas County is actually bringing this forward, and we're recommending that we support it too because we are also suffering from having to subsidize our 911 call center operations through tax revenue. So they are showing audited numbers from fiscal year 19 to 23, but I want to pull you guys forward into some more real-time numbers because the jump is a bit shocking, right? So when we look at our audited numbers from 19 through 23 for Pasco County, we have roughly 32% of the operation being subsidized by general fund taxes. But if you fast forward fiscal year 23, we subsidized 58%. That was roughly $3.9 million. For 24, and this is unaudited at this point, but we subsidized almost 83%. That was $6.5 million. And our budget for 25, we're subsidizing roughly 77% with tax dollars to the tune of $9 million.
You know, I forget, we have a new commissioner, so she may not know that this has historically been funded by the tax revenue from landlines, and those are going away fast.
So it's landline and cell phone, but the caveat with the cell phone tax is that it's based off your billing, where you get billed. So if we have, we'll call them snowbirds, and they're down here and they're using services in the winter, but they're getting billed in, we'll call it New York, that, New York collects that revenue, but we're providing service.
Is that a federal law? Because I'm wondering if that can get changed to where it's collected, where the calls come in from.
I do not believe it is, but I will double-check on that.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Chair. So during these storm events that we have, 911 calls go through, do we get reimbursed on those? I mean, I would think that could be a declaration-style reimbursement, couldn't we?
So that would be part of our FEMA package, but for that, we're requesting for reimbursement. But just to remind the board that it can take a handful of years before that money comes back in, which is why we recommend having an emergency contingency reserves.
But we do apply for reimbursement for this?
Yes.
And are we typically successful in?
Yes, we are typically successful.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions?
So the funding solution is to make the fee higher?
Yeah, so Pinellas is recommending a 10 cent per line increase.
It used to be 50 cents, and several years ago, the legislature lowered it down to 40 cents. So Pinellas, again, wants to see that brought back up at least to the 50 cent level.
Right.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So what's the number you need to, let's say, break even, do you think, based upon everything the way it is?
So I don't have that number with me, but I can definitely circle back and get it for you.
Because I think that's an emotion asphalt.
I wonder, like, can we get a?
Mr. Wright?
Can we get a percentage when someone buys a cell phone?
All right, my smarter-than-me assistant director crunched some numbers. He said roughly if we were to estimate $1.20 per line should break even, and we're currently at 40 cents.
I think we ask for the $1.20 and then see where it takes us.
Is this?
Well, didn't you say Pinellas was?
They're asking to increase 10 cents back to the 50.
We need to get with them, see if they'll step it up to.
So their shortfall is more than the $1.20, I know that, but I don't know the actual number, but they're at least wanting to get it back up to the level it was and then work from there. We might be able to do like a CPI, I don't know if that's possible on this one or not.
So Pinellas has a lot of landlines, I bet, because they have a lot of older homes. But what new homes are getting landlines? And so we probably have a lot more numbers here that are not from our county. So I think it probably affects us more than it affects Pinellas County.
Maybe the solution's Pinellas County's zip codes on our phones.
Ralph, is these items, we need to be voting up here on?
So no, it would be an issue that we would include. We're not going to be seeking a sponsor for this legislation. The intent is that Pinellas will seek a sponsor. We will work with them. I mean, by all means, I'll let them know to keep, to make us whole, it would take $1.20, but, you know, if we can at least get it up to the 50 cent, that's a start. But I will definitely make sure that, you know, the powers that be, the legislators know that to make us whole, it would actually be $1.20, but I don't know if they're willing to bite off that much and try to raise it back up to that amount. But if we can get it to 50, I think that's a start. So no, if you like the policy, we'll include it on our list of policies to support, but we don't actually need a sponsor.
All right. All right. What's the next item?
The next issue is fuel tax indexing. I do have Nick here to discuss this one. Here we go.
Name and address so we have an overall record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Nick Uren, county engineer. This is really an initiative that ought to be pushed through fact because it affects every county in Florida. The basic premise is that statewide gas taxes that go to the Florida Department of Transportation are indexed so that the tax rate applied to each gallon of fuel sold increases as the cost to produce projects increases. County fuel taxes, the local option fuel taxes that are authorized to be levied by county commissions, the up to 12 cents, are not indexed to inflation. And so we're just suggesting through this policy initiative that those fuel taxes at the county level also be indexed to inflation to keep up with the cost associated with producing infrastructure for transportation projects in Florida.
And Nick, correct me if I'm wrong, the state already does that on their fees and?
That's correct. Yeah, we were able to borrow language from an existing statute in our proposal.
What's going on here?
Because we could say, just use the language applied to the state comprehensive enhancement of transportation system tax, or SKEZ tax, apply that to the local option fuel tax paragraphs in statute so that the annual amount charged per gallon is updated based on the cost to produce projects.
So again, this policy initiative is a fairness issue. And to your point, this will be a proposal that FAC will be pushing and will work to get a sponsor on. This is just an issue, I think, that we need to make sure our legislative delegation knows. Again, this is a fairness issue, state already has it, we're asking for that same increase. And look what the benefit that will come out of it, we'll be able to address our infrastructure projects and helps the taxpayers of Pasco County.
I want to, thank you, sir. Just, Nick, I want to add on, you know, fuel taxes, there's capital component, there's also maintenance components. So are we suggesting all fuel taxes, local fuel taxes, because Public Works budget is also based on some of those?
That's right.
Rising maintenance costs.
So presently, the utilization of the fuel, the local option fuel tax in Pasco County, 5 cents of the 12 is allocated to capacity-creating projects, supports the capital program that my department is charged with constructing. The other 7 cents of the 12 are utilized today for operations and maintenance of our transportation system. So portions of that go to fund our Public Works Department, actually, portions of that tax actually also go to fund my traffic operations division within my department because that's more of an operations and maintenance function on our transportation system. Pasco County is one of the counties in Florida that has chosen to levy all 12 cents available to local option fuel taxes. I was slightly less prepared than I wanted to be this morning. I'm trying to figure out how many of the total 67 counties have levied all 12 and what level, to what level have other counties been. But a majority of them have gone to the 12 cents per gallon at this point in time. And so the beneficial impact to county governments of this policy shift is significant. And I will mention, in the annual publication by the Florida Department of Revenue, there's a footnote that says, had state gas taxes, the SKEZ tax not been indexed, the annual revenue decrease to the state of Florida would have been near $1 billion in fiscal year 23. So the indexing to the Consumer Price Index of the state gas tax generated an additional $1 billion in fiscal '23 statewide. So if you look at the fiscal impacts to the counties, it's a substantial impact, should we be able to include this policy in our legislative package.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Chair. So are we using CPI or sub-index under CPI in this? Because in our request, CPI covers everything from cigarettes to funeral costs, and CPI doesn't accurately reflect the cost of fleet maintenance, right? So if there was ability to use like the garbage and trash index or the water sewer trash index, those index more align with the type of operation you're running within your fleet. And that index captures roughly what your actual true cost increase is throughout the course of doing business in a year. CPI can be kind of wonky with this and it not doing any favors. So I didn't know if we used a sub-index within CPI.
Sure.
If we could ask for a different index under CPI that accurately reflects and captures what it costs to run a fleet business.
I'm going to give you a quick answer. Philosophically, I agree with you 100%. The Producer Price Index published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics is a more accurate reflection of the cost to construct projects. However, for simplicity and for consistency, we copied and pasted the language that is currently in place adjusting the state gas taxes, which does refer to the overall CPI.
So for state budget purposes, they use CPI.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
And I agree, just let's keep it simple. I think it makes more sense to do it if the state wants to change that way, so be it, but I think just keeping it simple, the copy and paste, we're better off. Right through.
Okay.
Okay, the next issue is dealing with pedestrian safety driver requirements. This issue was brought to us by the Chair of the Pasco IPO VPAC Board, Brian Michaels. If you'll come up.
Hey, Brian, and our language here isn't real clear, so go ahead and wordsmith this a little bit.
Okay, no, no problem. So Pasco has a unique history with Section 316.130. In 2008, Senator Prasano and Rick Kreisman from Pinellas County sponsored the bill to change Sections A and B. What we're looking for now is to change Section C. And when I get to Section C, you'll see why. So Section A, oh.
Do you have a copy of that or no?
So Section A requires all drivers to stop and remain stopped at any signalized intersection in the state of Florida. It was yield back in 2008. It is now stop before entering a crosswalk and remain stopped to allow a pedestrian to cross the road with a permitted signal. Section B is any crosswalk where signage is marked, you'll see sometimes at hospitals or in front of Dixies or some of the grocery stores, you'll see a separate sign that says that cars are required to stop for pedestrians. So this is the state of Florida for 2023, 22,555 crashes, 287 serious injuries, and 1,013 fatalities. This is Pasco County, 458 total crashes, 65 serious injuries, and 39 fatalities. Pinellas County, 1,361 total crashes, 143 serious injuries, sorry, and 54 fatalities. Hillsborough County is 1,481 total crashes, 166 serious injuries, and 82 fatalities. So this is Section C of the state law. And what this would do right now, the current law, is that any vehicle that approaches in a crosswalk will yield the right-of-way slowing down or stopping if need to be to yield. What we're proposing or what we're suggesting is to use the same language that we have in Section A, which is to stop before entering a crosswalk and remain stopped. So it's using the same language that's in Section A. It's not a big change, but what it'll do is it'll require any crosswalk in the state of Florida for a vehicle to stop and remain stopped so the pedestrian can cross the road.
Well, is it any crosswalk when there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk?
Yes.
Not, because we crosswalks when no one's in it.
Yes. Yes. It's when a pedestrian is in the crosswalk.
And that's what's not clear on number four in our narrative, right?
Yeah, I just did a synopsis of it, but I get the gist of what he's asking.
To yield the right-of-way if there is a pedestrian in the crosswalk or cyclist or user? I don't know what's the right word.
Yeah, well, the state law has pedestrian, and so anybody that's in, it can include bicycle, scooter, anything that's a mobility that's technically in the crosswalk, cars are required to stop. And what we're saying is get rid of the yield, because we got rid of it in 2008, and this would follow Section A of the state law where you're required to stop at signalized intersections, but this would require any crosswalk where cars were stopped. And of course, if you've been?
I thought that was law already.
No. So the closest state?
That's not common sense.
The closest state that has the stop for pedestrian for, in any crosswalk, is the state of Georgia. They changed it in 1995.
Well, I've yelled at a lot of cars.
California's had a few.
Yeah, if you've been walking, even the state law for Section A, we promoted our Project Red Light this year. We reached 350,000 people. But our, the enforcement part and the DOT part had to be postponed because of the storms that we had. But we're looking at next year to make that even larger.
Can I, Seth, why is your opinion, do you not think that change C when they did A and B? Your? I'm sorry.
So I was on the original committee in Pinellas County.
Sean Foster, lobbyist for Pasco County, just wondering what the reasons were, if you knew originally why they did A and B and not C.
I was on the original committee, and I'm actually the one that suggested changing the yield to stop. And I was relatively new to our, they had a pedestrian advisory committee at that time, and I was the new guy on the committee. And we changed it to, we changed A and B. I don't know why we didn't change C, but in reviewing this year for Project Red Light, I saw C, and it's like, it just doesn't make sense. This needs to be consistent with the state law. We want cars to stop and remain stopped for pedestrians, even in crosswalks.
Yeah.
So that would help for schools, it'll help for pretty much any place that has a crosswalk, the cars will be requi- has a crosswalk, the cars are, will be required to stop and remain stopped.
I'm 100% for this. I mean, they shouldn't be rolling through a crosswalk when someone's in it. I literally thought this was the law already, so.
No, it's not. That's what we need to do.
Mom pushing a stroller, come on.
So Commissioners, if we do choose to make this a policy priority, we will also have to look for a sponsor for a bill for this. It's a possibility that there may be a bill that's introduced to the legislature next session that addresses this same statute. If that's the case, it's a possibility we could amend it. But, but just keep in mind, we will have to get a sponsor for this particular issue, unlike two and three, which we're just saying this is an issue that should be addressed and there should be some, there should be a bill that's being filed either by FAC or another county.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, some of these issues are significant. It's going to take a broad base to expect that Pasco County is going to pass this on their own. I think it's naive. And we've got a limited amount of space and time to talk to people, what we're going to get done. This is something that the state wants to address, if the state needs to, we can put input to it. But I don't think we should be carrying the mantle of this and these other things, too. I think fact is going to be a way to go for a lot of this stuff. You know, I'll give you an example. Let's say you're on State Road 52. Let's say there was a crosswalk going across. You've got the traffics flying down one side, bumping a bump for a long stretch of time. But where the pedestrian is, he's on that one side, he's going to be waiting, waiting, and waiting. And you're going to get a guy who's going to come down across, like, have to stop.
Well, I think-
And I'll tell you what happened. No, let me finish. What can happen, when someone stops at an intersection, you've increased the chance of rear end crashes that happen that are much more dangerous and much more lethal. So you've got to be careful what you're looking at.
On State Road 52 at a crosswalk, that's going to be a signalized crosswalk. There's not going to be a crosswalk on 52 that's unsignalized. So that's covered in state law.
You could have, it could be a smaller road, too. Same type of thing goes. So that person's not going to be crossing anyway. They're going to wait till it clears out, and you're going to make, again, you're going to increase the traffic accidents that are going to happen as well. So again, this is like an FAC thing. It's not something Pasco County should be dealing with. We've got enough local issues to go deal with and funding issues to deal with. This is a fact issue. Bring it to fact, let them go after it.
Mr. Cabal?
This is probably a long shot.
Nick, do we have any sort of inventory on, you know, crosswalks that fall into this, into this category? I know in my neighborhood, there's a four lane collector that runs through. There would be a crosswalk that does a big block crossing. But other than that, I don't know how many major collectors. So this is to Commissioner Mariano's point of busier roads versus local roads. Go ahead.
Again, good morning, Nick. You're in County Engineer. To Mike's question, in fact, the announcement that he made yesterday about our federal highway grant was targeting precisely this condition: unsignalized, no device crosswalks on arterial and collector roads that we would like to install traffic control devices or some sort of flashing beacon, hybrid beacon, whatnot, at those locations, so that they wouldn't fall in Category C, they would fall in Category A or B. And motorists would be obligated to stop for pedestrians within the crosswalk. So we have roughly 80, I said yesterday, 83. I'm still trying to get a firm count on exactly the right number of those locations in Pasco County. But we are looking to target those and then convert them to signalized crosswalks. Commissioner, to your point on State Road 52, unfortunately, there is one crosswalk on State Road 52 that is unsignalized. We have reached out to the Department of Transportation and said, that is not a safe condition. We would like you to remove that, because it is in portion of 52, the western Pasco County portion of 52, that's a six lane road posted at, I want to say 50 miles per hour. It's not, it's not a condition we would like to see replicated at all. But to your point, Mike, we are absolutely targeting these, these locations and then trying to improve pedestrian safety and driver yield behaviors at these locations within Pasco County. To the point of the proposal, though, I, and I hear you, Commissioner Mariano, as far as whether there should be a statewide initiative, and I think it ought to be. It ought to be a banding together, not just of Florida Association of Counties, but Florida League of Cities as well, because municipalities have a vested interest in protecting the safety of their pedestrians. They're really our highest activity centers in the state. But, but it's a very important issue that we manage the conflicts between pedestrians and vehicles in Florida. We've got a reputation to shed, and this is an initiative that, that works toward moving the needle.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Like I said, the MPOAC might be the group to even lead the way to bring everybody together. But I don't think it should be something we get, we've got a limited amount of time, limited audience. We've got to focus on stuff that really matters, that we can affect.
So to your point and what you're saying there, Commissioner, make it an issue that we support, put it on, include, but really, you don't see this as one where we should seek the sponsor. This should be really a statewide initiative, Florida Association of Counties, MPO Board. But it's something that we can at least say, it's important to us. Hopefully, this will be addressed this coming session.
Will I take the space?
Would your association be interested in this, Steve, or?
So we can bring this up at the legislative workshop in December with Florida Association of Counties and ask for their help in getting a sponsor. And I think this is an issue that, again, it should be, every county should be addressing this and saying, this is what needs to be done.
So a number of years ago, we had a Senate President who was a very big cyclist. What was his name? Sean?
Andy Gardner.
Yes, Andy Gardner. Thanks, Ron. I will, I will dig into seeing if we have a legislator who is a big outdoors person, because anyone who is a person who gets outside and exercises is going to want to be safe in a crosswalk. So I will try and look for someone who cares about moms crossing the street in a crosswalk with a stroller or, I mean, any legislator with young children would probably be interested in having a safe environment to cross the street. So I think we can find somebody.
And again, Pasco was a leader in safety in 2008. It was Pinellas and Pasco that sponsored the bill. It wasn't a-
Yeah, I think this is crazy if we're not-
But I understand, I understand the time and you guys, and you only have a limited amount of bills that you can do every year. But I appreciate your input and-
I think, I think-
Mr. Moore, you want to add something? Make sure you-
Thank you. Mike, what's on the group? One suggestion, and Sean and I were just talking about this, too. I would advise a county to reach out to their sheriff as well and have that conversation with the sheriffs. And obviously, city police chiefs are going to be the ones that have to enforce it. So if they're not on board, it's not, it's not moving anywhere. I can tell you that right now. So that would be my suggestion for anyone to, if you want to make fact, I'm with you. But talk to your sheriff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Have a good one.
And the last issue for consideration for one of our issues is Live Local. And I'll ask David Goldstein to come up.
Why don't we not have the code enforcement thing on here? The anonymous code enforcement? Is that something-
So we will, after, after this one's done, then we'll take any other issues that you'd like us to consider to include on our, our list. And that's one we can address.
Okay. So I'm not sure this issue needs any introduction. I think you all are very familiar with Live Local. And the real issue is, as you know, last session, we got some relief on the tax side. It took a lot of political capital to get that. We never got the relief we wanted on the land use side. As you know, every board meeting, we're doing new restrictions on new commercial zonings, industrial zonings because of Live Local. The real, it certainly needs to be changed. It certainly needs to be addressed. The real question I have for you is, you all know what we went through last session and the hit we took because we were the tip of the spear on this issue. So do you want us to be the tip of the spear on this issue again this session? I know Commissioner Starkey and I did a presentation to FAC on this issue at the last, what was it, the Policy and Innovation Committee meeting. They seemed to be receptive to our ideas. We are starting to hear more horror stories from other jurisdictions. You know, I will say, as it relates to Pasco, my personal opinion is it's, I would love to see the law changed, but it's not affecting us because our strategy of threatening to sue anybody that tries to use it is actually working. I mean, we're, we haven't had a live application for Live Local because everybody's afraid to take us on. I'm just being honest with you. So certainly needs to be changed. But the real question I have for you all is, do you want us to be the, the ones pushing it this session?
What would you push, what would you push to change? And Sean's wanting to speak. But what changes would-
So at the end of the last session, when we were getting some relief on the tax side, the Senate President's office actually asked me, will this shut Pasco up? And I said, it'll probably shut us up on the tax side, but we never got the relief we wanted on the land use side. And so there was some discussion about, well, if you limited it to just redevelopment sites, would that help? And I said, that would help. If you limited it to just below 80% of AMI, that would help. If you gave us credit for multifamily zone sites, because those are also available for affordable housing, that would help. And let us get some of our commercial neutral sites off the table. There's many ways to tackle it, but we need a, we need a Senate President that's willing to listen to us on those issues.
I think we have one, but-
So, you know, I'm looking to advice from our team on this issue, but, you know, I'm happy to offer language to anybody that was willing to listen.
I think I'm Sean Foster, Sunrise Consulting Group. I think I've got some good news for it, too, also, David. I don't think it will be us just this session. Been around the state, talking to folks in Orange County, Volusia County, here at Brevard. They're all this time now putting it on their legislative agenda like you are. So I would say, I don't think you would have to be, I think this is an item we could actually work through the Florida Association of Counties. You wouldn't need to take the forefront. Have you already had any conversations with the other counties? Have they reached out to you?
Not specifically, but I will say that most of the other counties, most of the other counties are following our lead. I'm just going to be honest with you. On the tax side, everybody just copied what we did. And they thanked us for it, but we're the ones that took the political hit, and now they're all just following our lead. So the real question is, do we want to be doing the same thing on the land use side? We can, but it's really up to the board.
He's got a good point, because I keep giving out his email to contact him on how we did it and did it here in the county.
Yeah. So that's most, most of the contacts I get from other counties are, what did Pasco do? And how do we duplicate it? That's, that's the inquiries I get.
Mr. Mariano?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you, whether this comes from fact with Live Local or from us and others that we join with, we're the head of the spear. They know it. We're not going to hide from it. We've got to keep on going strong with it, and I think it's going to get more people to come along with us. It was the right thing to do. And as Seth said, we may lose a lot of funding, but it's something we're still going to focus on. I think our credibility is a lot stronger. I mean, you did a phenomenal job. You educated many, many people. They all see it, and they saw some effects of it. So I think we still need to lead with it. It's a lot better now because the Senate President's stepped back. There's a new president, there's new leadership. I think they'll understand it. And if they've seen the effects already, I think it's, it's very worthy. I mean, literally, the regional planning councils were so thrilled with what you did up there that you got me an officer role. Thank you very much.
David, is there, is there just some wording within the, still within that bill that we need to change to make it right for everybody?
Yes. I mean, I will say that when we first started, we just asked for a carve out for Pasco. I mean, that-
Right.
We didn't really get anywhere with that. But I think there are, like I said, three or four different ways that we could tackle it to minimize the impact to Pasco, like limited to redevelopment sites, limited to below 80% of AMI, given us credit for multifamilies on site. There's, I explored all those issues with the Senate President's office last session. Just none of them gained traction. And Commissioner Mariano and Commissioner Starkey know the reception we got when we tried some of these things. So it wasn't, wasn't very positive. If we get a dialogue with somebody in power in the legislature, I can propose language. I just need to know which, which version of those cures is acceptable to them, because there's multiple ways to handle.
Mr. Cabal?
David, do we have a sight picture on what other jurisdictions' issues are? Are they similar to ours? I'm getting back to, you know, do I have a prominent lead on this? Or, you know, kind of a behind the scenes, if our interests are the same?
I will say that most of the other jurisdictions I've been familiar with on this issue have been more reactive in the sense that they get an application for a Live Local application, and then they don't like it. And then they're trying to figure out, how do they stop it? We were more proactive and said, if you even try to use it in Pasco, we're going to sue you. All right. So we're the only county I'm aware of that attempted, did that. So and it's been successful. The, so yes, the issues are similar, but they're also somewhat unique. The reason we're a little more unique than other counties is because we have a lot of vacant land that's commercially and industrially zoned that we reserve for employment purposes. You heard the presentation at the board about how important it is to reserve land for commercial and industrial. We have a lot of land that's been reserved for that purpose, that probably more so than in many other jurisdictions. So Pinellas, mostly built out. I mean, they're, they're not as affected by it as we are. Hillsborough, a little more affected. But it depends on how much vacant land you have available that's zoned commercial and industrial. We have far more than most counties-
Chair?
That's vacant.
Mr. White.
Thank you. Thinking about it, Mike, we lead the way. We have the largest number of commercially zoned properties in this state, right? And then we have our ready sites that we discussed yesterday and shared little concerns with those. We have to protect ourselves and continue this offensive, defensive posture, if you will. We came at this so hard last year. We have to continue to show we're serious. If we back off this now, I think we lose credibility in this battle. And I appreciate Commissioner Mariano's viewpoint on this. I think we need to go up there again. Now that we have other players in the market, other counties and cities, they're going to automatically look at what we're doing as we're going to the next phase of hopefully fixing this bill of protecting job creating sites in our county and our state for all the economic purposes we can count on. And they're going to fall in line and support it, you know, regardless. So this time, we actually have a team potentially behind us. So I say, we just keep moving forward and we have to own it, in my opinion. We've gone this far, and we're right on this issue. We are right. And I think we would be doing a disservice to our fellow counties and cities and all the taxpayers of this state if we don't continue to move forward, because it only benefits out of state investment.
I think, to go along with what Mr. White was saying, I think we did lead that charge and took a hit, actually, because we led it so hard against the Senate President. It affected funding. I think we went so far with it, but we didn't finish.
Yep.
And I think we got to finish to make it right for everybody.
I don't want to be a negative nanny here. She is still going to be there for two years, Senator Pasadena. She's going to be Rules Chairman. I think we could probably get a sponsor in the House. I don't think I'd be very confident to tell you, even after talking to Mike a few minutes, that we would be able to get a Senate sponsor to do it. She's the Rules Chair. She's going to say exactly if that bill can go on to any committee in the Senate. Now, if we looked at a ways to amend a bill, also, maybe still have that language. But I just want to be very upfront with that. I would not expect Senator Nogolia and also Senator Hooper is not filing bills. So the only Senator besides, Senator Burgess, my apologies.
Mr. Cabal?
If I could suggest something, perhaps, perhaps we, you know, the team here, our lobbyist team, need to huddle on this, recognizing that, David, the reason I wanted to ask the question, it sounds like folks are in a reactive posture, whereas Pasco County, I think, has been thinking about this a little more strategically. And I don't know if I want a bunch of tacticians necessarily in a charge on something that is strategic in nature. So perhaps there's a, a way that we can coach, be the coach on this team and kind of, kind of work those angles through other, through other areas to finish the job. So I think we continue our strategic thought process on this to achieve goals that we set out to achieve. I, just a thought that may thread this needle.
Well, with the lobby team we have now for the state, I don't know how many counties they actually represent other than us, but I think it's quite a few. I think the lobbyists should go out and get a feel from those other counties, if they feel the same way, to tweak the wording to make it right for everybody.
But what we're hearing is, is the board wants to finish the job.
Absolutely. Ms. Yeager?
The only thing I want to add is, I think we need to just tread lightly, let our lobbyists be our front people, because she is still, still there, and we don't want to jeopardize our funding. So that's just my opinion, my take.
Mr. Chair? What's your?
Ms. Starkey?
Yeah, I don't want, I, I think, I don't want to jeopardize our funding either. And I also, I also heard the House sponsor say, Vicki, right? Vicki Lopez, what's her name?
Lopez.
Yeah. I, I heard her talk about it, and I read where she talked about it, McKibben Skane and other places, that she knows it needs to be tweaked. I think the Senate President knows it needs, the former Senate President knows it needs to be tweaked. So I think we have to let our lobbyists- So, I think we have to let our lobbyists, and maybe some of those who have relationships, you know, I have pretty good friends with Senator Albritton, to make some calls and see, see what the lay of the land is before we lay out a strategy.
Mr. Mariano?
So that's what I think we should do.
We're on the same page. I think it's the broader the base, I mean, look, again, we're not going to hide from where the leader will lead it. But I think the broad base of getting everybody from a lobbyist group, whatever associates that they have to find out where they're at. But I think also, David, the connections you've made as well, those other counties and cities that have looked at it as well, to get them in the room as well, and let's go work together on pushing the stores as a big blunt force all the way through.
And there is still the FAC Legislative Conference coming up in December, so maybe we can...
Yeah, I will be there. I'll be at the NACO Board Meeting, so I'm hoping some of you guys will be there to help push our points along.
Well, by the way, I meant to bring this up at the last board meeting, but I'm going to actually, with the board's permission, I'm actually going to put my name in half for the second vice president.
Oh, nice, yeah.
So what I'm hearing, to summarize, is we definitely keep it on the list, and then work with our lobbying team as to the best method to get some change on this issue. Is that kind of an accurate summary?
I mean, David, I guess I would, I would say, I think the answer to that is resounding yes. And the strategy needs to try to be to employ, you know, a team with this, right? So, we have more allies than we did last night, right? We had a lot of pats on the back as we got pushed forward on it. But David, I would say, are there any particular parts of Live Local that maybe we should focus on more than others?
Yeah, it's definitely...
Recognizing it's a marathon, perhaps not a sprint, but...
It's definitely tweaking the land use preemption. It's, I'm not saying I love exactly the way that we landed on the tax side, but on the short term, we're exempt. Can't promise we'll be exempt in the future, but it's not worth fighting that battle this year, because we got someone, as you know, you were in those conversations too. We got some, we got enough relief on the tax side, and the two we got that actually applied, the property appears are denied. So, we're kind of good on the tax side, at least as of today. It's really the land use side and making some tweaks there, so that not all of our commercial industrial land is subject to Live Local.
Mike, we still haven't been, we're still not out of the water on a couple of sites in Pasco County.
I agree, 100%.
So this land use piece in this board, this taxpayer of our county, has invested a tremendous amount of money, and I'm not going to restate the sites, but we know what they are, and what, you know, and its intended use for those sites. And I'm not willing to, more than one of five, but I'm not willing to go down and just lay down on this, absolutely not. This, we're, we're right, and I think we need to go and have conversations about this next piece, and if it makes people uncomfortable, so be it, but it's the right thing to do.
Well, I'm hearing the majority of the board, more or less, saying we still need to have a leadership role in this. And I don't think we're debating that. You know, leave the how, perhaps, to us and the lobbyist team to figure out how to advance that in the best way possible. So I understand.
It seems like the conflict is with the counties where they're requesting to use the local in greens, in greenfield, versus the counties that, or the counties that are looking at it as redevelopment.
So, here, I will tell you that, when I spoke to the Senate President's Office on that very issue, what I heard was that their primary issue was they were driving down older areas that had underused, underutilized industrial buildings, commercial buildings that were sitting there vacant, and they didn't think that was appropriate to have these vacant industrial, commercial buildings...
Yeah, I agree.
Sitting there when they could be used for affordable housing.
Yeah. So I think if we just try and treat greenfields versus redevelopment, I think we'll get...
I mean, I do think that's, that's probably the tweak that the Senate, the former Senate President would be most receptive to.
A force in the market.
But there are others. For example, we got, on the tax side, we got relief by limiting it to below eighty percent of AMI. You could do something similar on the land use side, which probably would make almost all those applications go away.
Yeah. So a combination of those two will be golden.
Yes, I agree with you. There, so...
It's not that hard.
I don't think it's that hard, you just need, you need some leadership that's receptive to those concepts.
Well, I think we need a coalition.
Yes.
All right, well, I think we have enough to move forward.
Okay. All right. Thank you, David.
So that brings us to the end of our policy proposals. And now, I'll ask commissioners if there's anything else we should include.
Yes.
Well, I think Commissioner Starkey had an issue with wanting to bring code forward.
Yes, anonymous code enforcement, to bring it back. And when we brought this up at the legislate, at the policy conference, every county jumped in that, yes, we have to bring it back. I mean, I wasn't the only commissioner that had residents who went to the hospital because their neighbors beat them up, because they turned them in for, you know, for being a drug house, or whatever was going on that they needed to call code on. So, Ralph, you were there, right?
Yes.
Yeah, everyone jumped in on that. We all need anonymous, it needs to have guardrails. And I had a conversation with President of Yeager the other day on this, and it shouldn't just be a blanket, you can call, you know, every day, an anonymous call on your neighbor and have it be spiteful. So, needs to have guardrails on it, but we need to bring that back.
Can I tell you one option, over there?
Yeah, come forward.
One of the options they're going out there is having a 12-month time. So, meaning that anybody can give it, and it wouldn't be in public records, but in 12 months it would. So I think that would give both sides, you know, the opportunity, somebody would know that they couldn't give 27 calls on their neighbors, and in 12 months, their neighbor's going to know. So, you're not going both ways, keeping it, giving an anonymous time for a short time, but in 12 months, then it would be public records. You may want to consider that as an option.
Yeah, but I also don't think you, that someone could be able to call on their neighbor once a week either, so that, so I would do a combination of maybe.
Just to give you an idea, I think that's an idea that the, both sides are considering, and it's something that could be proposed, but again, those ideas can be worked out through session.
Are other counties doing that, or no?
No, I mean, this would be a change to state law, state law, you know. Currently, there are some folks who don't think it should be anonymous at all, and there are some slightly who think it should be. And so this is just that kind of mediating, giving that opportunity for both. I don't, I don't know how you would stop your neighbor from giving 57, you know, but sooner or later, those anonymous would be made public, and we're hoping that that would shorten it, because they would be told, you know, in 12 months, this will be known.
So, for a little context, it used to be anonymous, and then there was a legislator down in South Florida...
Correct.
That got upset, because I think a neighbor called on him or something. Was he a builder, or, I don't know, there was some personal issue with a, I think, a senator, and they got it changed. And we, we have been waiting for that person to get out of office, and now they're out of office, and now we all want to change it back.
Yeah. I know, because our constituents are afraid of retaliation, so...
As a practical matter on this, if I can, it's not so much if an anonymous complaint is filed, and there is independent verification by the code officer, there's really no reason to ever disclose that person's name, as long as, as long as it can be validated independently by the government. But the way the statute is set up right now, we've got to, we've got to turn over who has been flagged, who flagged the case. But that takes away the autonomy of the code officers to investigate complaints at. So I'm not sure that, that the idea of it's a public records exemption for 12 months, and then it becomes valid, really helps in the long run.
I would ask my aide to come up, Katie's here, and I think we have the office that gets the most code violations of calls of anybody. And Katie can tell you some of the experiences, and people are stopping, people are not calling in anymore, because they, they call in and they get scared. So, you want to talk about that?
There's one particular gentleman, that he did report his neighbor to code, and he came over and he ended up in the hospital because of it. And on a daily, people are complaining, and it turns into codes not doing their job, counties not doing their job, because they can't call it in, because they are scared for their safety. And then you also have the alternative where they want to call it in, but if they're not directly affected, they can't call it in. So there's kind of a lot of holes there to kind of fill in. But majority of them, they end up not doing any, not calling it in, and then therefore, it just gets worse and worse and worse and worse.
And the neighborhood slides down.
Mr. Whitman?
And Katie has had them go in on their hernia, right?
Yes, unfortunately.
Let's not have you about.
Right. Mr. Whitman?
So, best measure of practice, my standard practice in our office, is we enter all code cases under the office of Commissioner Seth Whitman.
But?
To avoid all of those issues. That's how we log them. It makes people feel comfortable.
But you can't do that.
They're scared. Well, we do, and I don't care. If people want to call in something, we're going to submit it, and it protects that person and stops neighbor pitting against neighbor. Our office also doesn't go out and look to stir up code case problems either, which may increase the volume and the pressure on code. But this, this issue in general, I don't think Pasco needs to carry the torch on this.
Oh, we're not, there's, there's tons of them that are...
Be, be, you know, in a bigger picture of code, I think we need to go back through, like I said to Mike, and erase those codes that we can actually enforce and police and deregulate to others. I mean, you got codes working your butts off spinning in circles, what's the flavor of the week, of the day? Like, I think there needs to hold be in our own policy, a whole just review of the code book, and police what we can police, what's warranted, and then get rid of the ones that we're not even trying, because all laws are equal, right? So, it just does a disservice to code.
Well, you don't have some of the neighborhoods, maybe in your district, like mine in southwest Pasco, that have, unfortunately, a lot of sheriff calls for illegal behavior going on in those houses?
So what law's more important than the other? They're all equal. Our rules, our ordinance are all equal. So, what's, how do you stack rank them, when that's the law of the Pasco County land? They're all just, they're all on the same level.
They should all be enforced.
But that's impossible.
But, so then you don't have any laws?
No, we go through and, done is better than perfect.
Well, I know...
Police what we can police effectively and do a good job. So if the issues that predominate, they come, those are the ones we focus on, and maybe, I don't know, Mike, we've talked about this before, I think we need a whole review of code generally, of what these officers can be responsible for, because they're tugged and pulled in so many different directions, and it's not practical. So, you know, I think this goes into a bigger code conversation.
County attorney, what are the rules of the commissioner being able to turn things in under their own names? Because we used to do that, and then they said we couldn't do that anymore.
I don't know that we said that you can't do that anymore. There were, there were, you know, that then puts your aides and yourselves in the position of being the witness in, in court if it becomes an issue in the, in the complaint. I don't think that if the commission office is the complainant, that that violates the statute, because it's a complaint. You may get a creative defense lawyer if it, if somebody is, if somebody hires a lawyer that wants to depose the commissioner to find out who, where they got the tip-off of, of the code complaint. And we would not be able to use your normal immunity from getting deposed, because you would become a witness in that case. I don't know that the case would be thrown out. Our concern has always, is the way the statute is written, if you don't have a complainant, we're going to get dismissed. But, I don't know that there, that it technically violates the law if the complainant is the commission office. See?
Okay, because weren't we told we couldn't do that unless we went by and looked at it ourselves? That's what Jessica or someone told us.
From my understanding, the commissioner's office was not to take any calls from neighbors and JP, because we've had extensive conversations about this, to put their names on the code complaint. However, if the commissioner, like Commissioner Starkey herself, drives her district regularly and observes a code violation, she can then call it in, and it'll be put under the commissioner's office. Because now, she, I forget how it's written, but there's something in there that said, that basically, because you observed it yourself, and you're an inside, you're not outside or something. JP, I don't know if you want to add to that?
Mr. Mercer?
Thank you. For the record, JP Murphy, Assistant County Administrator, Development Services. So the instruction that we received was mostly what Katie described. If the commissioner views that, that violation and wants to report it, it's actually marked BOCC West and BOCC East, depending on the side of the county, because you're a member of the corporate entity.
That's a, that's a new thing that we're...
Yeah, versus the individual aide, because Katie was getting harassed on Facebook for having been the member that was reporting the violation. But we were told that if a resident was making the complaint to the commissioner's office, that complaint needs to be logged under that resident's name in GovQA.
There's like unanimous support in the state to go back to anonymous with guardrails.
I mean, we have several instances of violence, of threatened violence. People come in, and we had, I had a lady in my office crying, because she had unpermitted work in addition to other code enforcement actions happening behind her, and was threatened when she made the complaint. And, you know, unfortunately, we were able to send out a code enforcement, or, excuse me, a minimum standards on a building violations case and take care of that. But I know Commissioner Mariano's office deals with those from time to time as well. So, there's, there's plenty of evidence and story, so I leave it up to the board. We'll support you with whatever direction you want to go. But there is a very good rationale for having it be anonymous, whether you told that timeframe or not.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes?
So, one of the arguments that we had years ago, and we tried to defeat this thing going forward, was with the Sheriff's Department, they can take an anonymous complaint, right?
I don't know. I don't speak for the Sheriff's Department.
They can. So...
Only if it's, only if it's a criminal violation, though. I mean, if you're operating, if they are, if they're writing a crowning ordinance violation under the same statute that we're writing one, they have to follow them the same, under the same rules. But if they're, if they're doing a state law violation, the rules, that, that piece of the legislation about anonymous complaints doesn't apply.
So I'll say, I think there's another thing for FAC, and I think we've had support to go through, so I think we need to get FAC to unite again.
I think FAC and Floridalega Cities as well will be leading the charge on this, because all the membership wants this. We'll just include it as an issue that is a issue of concern for us, and hope we see the laws changed.
And again, it's a broad-based thing, because broad support out there, again. That's something they should be leading the way, and we can like, maybe just touch on it, whatever, but again...
So I will include it.
FAC is going to be the big thing.
Yeah, I'll include it with our policies.
All right.
So with that, now, I think there's an issue that you had, Commissioner Mariano.
Yes, so I sent you a thing earlier. After we had our elections done, years ago, we had the Sunrise permitting for the dredging that went through. Took a trip up to the cabinet, Governor Scott at the time led the cabinet, had a four-o approval to get it through DEP to approve the channel dredging. We then went through the Army Corps of Engineers as they got involved, and it was brutal. We went all the way through where we met their requirements on how to do the permitting, how to do the mitigation. When we get to the line of getting approved, once we knew how to, how to set it through, avoiding certain areas where, where 100, let's say 100%, 90% vegetated, we avoided those to go through the dirt, figuring that mitigation would go down. At the last bit, they shifted gears on us and said, no, we're going to make, we're going to charge you 100% no matter what. We tried to change the alignment, they wouldn't let us change the alignment. So, when I saw that Trump was elected, I called Gary Grubb at Sunrise Harbor Town. I says, Gary, I says, like, it's time to go take a look at this. I think the time to get this done is going to be now, and we're probably going to need to get started right away. The copy I sent you was something that he sent me back on a text message this morning. Didn't even know we're having this meeting, but what this says about dredging and the nature of coastal preserve is very difficult. A few years back, when Representative Mariano was up there, there was a Lake County representative...
No, this was Citrus County. So we had a Citrus County Representative Masulo...
Masulo.
That created the Nature Coast Aquatic Preserve.
So let me finish. So let me finish. He's the same guy. He lives in Lake County, but he represents Citrus as well.
Okay.
So he took, he took that bill and brought it in and took Citrus and Hernando without telling anybody in this county they were going to loop Pasco County into this thing. Okay, now, I know we had the dredging stuff we're working on. I know we've had things working on for Leisure Beach to get their channel to be able to connect up to the Hudson Channel, to connect to one other channel. The things we wanted to get done. I know Westport wanted to get their channel dredged. I know Sea Pines wants to get their channel dredged. I know there's issues around driftwood to get done, and I knew if we're going to do anything else further with even the other channels going out further, this aquatic preserve was going to hurt us. I went to him twice, couldn't get him to change, and sadly, he was very convincing, because the vote was like a hundred and forty-six to one. Amber's the only one who voted against it. So with that said, I knew until he was gone, it'd be tough to make anything happen again. He's now gone. Now we're going forward, and now with, again, with this election, if there's ever a chance to get our channels cleaned out, restored, now's the time to go do it. And when I look at the map, I'm just, if you would, put the map up.
Man, we can't take.
I gave a couple of maps with the lines. I'm going to show you some of the areas. Evidently, the block's not showing up from the copies I drew. Well, anyway. So with all, with all that said, I want to take a strong stance first to just pull us out of the aquatic preserve. As we negotiate further, we can negotiate the areas we're trying to protect and try to get to. Sean, if you would, as you see this here, you want to comment on what do you, what do you think the best approach is to, to make these moves, because you were up there when this all happened as well?
I appreciate bringing this to me. I saw some of the language. I was talking to Mike also. This can be, I, first, we're going to have to look at, see how, how many other communities' areas have been able to do what we're asking, first of all. I'm not sure. In other words, we have these, of course, around the state, and I'm not sure how many other communities have said, hey, since this was, you know, put in, I'd like to look at that, number one. And then, two, just really touch base with DEP. I don't need, you know, DEP standing up in a committee and going against us. So I think I've got some work to do before I can give you more information on it.
And Sean, I guess, I, because I was just referring to my team, I, I thought that maintenance dredging was allowable.
I thought so, too.
Now, new channels, because I knew, you know, we talked about that, that's kind of where the prohibition would be. So.
Right.
You could get some clarification, too, because I know we're still pursuing dredging.
Maintenance over the, over the new?
Yes, sir.
I, yeah, I, if you show the next slide, I'm a little shocked at this. So go down to Gulf Harbors. I don't understand. So we have a channel that goes out to, you know, our channel is, are you, are they saying if our channel fills in, we can never use it? What, that channel should have been excluded. All the channels should be excluded.
So Keith Wiley, Director of Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources, it's been some time since I recall reading the language, but there was a mapping exercise that was supposed to take place that would clarify some of the concerns, I think, that Commissioner Mario brought up. I think that's something we need to maybe have Sean look at to see what the exceptions, because there was some exceptions built into the aquatic preserve language from what I recall. It's been some time since we've seen it, though.
Well, and I'll go back to, there's, there's markers on, in Leisure Beach going out. Marker twelve thirteen would connect right to an existing channel on both sides. There's probably like four or five hundred boats in that area.
But they would never connect that channel out to the outside channel.
Exactly. And Leisure Beach Channel goes out, it actually kind of like does a funky jog out to the side. And I apologize not to get these maps. I tried to get them earlier, but Colleen was sick, and Sonya did the best she could with what she's got. But the Leisure Beach Channel only goes out a little bit. At low tide, they can't use that channel anyway. So their only way is high tide, getting in and out. So it's a big boating community. I mean, it's, it's, I'll tell you what, the homes out there.
This shuts down our whole county for boating.
Oh, it does. And again, that's why we fought it so hard. Again, with Masulo now out of the house, we got a chance, I think, to turn this back. And now that we've gone so far to what we've gone through, literally, he's the one who drove it. They didn't ask us if we wanted to be in it. It was all of a sudden, bam, there it was.
Yeah.
And you guys remember, we talked about this many times before, but it was his drive to take us, to loop us in with Hernando and Citrus that made this happen. We just need to go put it back, like, go turn back the clock, and let's go back to where we were.
More importantly, all the, all the garbage household items that have been washed into these channels from these stormplains.
All right, let's hear it. Mr. Moore, you want to address the board?
Mike Moore, Southern Group. This Southern Group, we just recently hired the Chief of Staff for DEP in a search here. So I, my opinion is, why don't we talk offline about it?
Perfect.
Have a conversation with her, and she'll give us probably the best route to take, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Sounds good.
Okay, let's go ahead then and move in, unless there's any other proposals you all had. We'll go into our funding initiative proposals. I did this by alphabetical with our departments. So the first one up is Animal Services. Mike Schumate, Spencer Conover.
Good morning, everyone. Spencer Conover, Assistant Director of Pasco County Animal Services. Mike Schumate, Director. I remember in the infancy of thinking of a capital project for Animal Services back in 2018, and when we first designed it, it was going to be a big steel building just lined with dog kennels and dog kennels and dog kennels. And much like our industry does, and subsequently our organization, it changed. The focus went from institutionally housing animals in the shelter to helping people, helping pets, keeping people with their pets. And so this project is designed for two of main things. And one of the most beautiful things about this project is it is truly representative of the voice of the customer. In 2020, we were running a once-weekly vaccination clinic, and during COVID, we had to shut that down for seven and eight weeks. And when we brought it back, we said, you know, we'll do it twice a week until the need dies down. It is four and a half years later, and we are still running it twice a week, and it is booked thirty days out, because that's as far out as we can book out our appointments. Subsequently, in 2022, our national partners at American Pets Alive did a survey of our community and found that forty-eight percent of our community members right now cannot afford preventative veterinary care like spay and neuter and vaccinations. So those are a huge part of this project. Additionally, whenever we get complaints, you all get complaints, we want to have solutions for our community. If we get a complaint about an aggressive dog in a community, we have a program to help that. If we get a call about somebody needing a license because they can't come out to the, to the shelter, we have online programs, we have a solution. Unfortunately, one of the calls that we get a lot lately is, there are cats in my community, and there is nowhere to get them fixed. And our answer has to be, you're right, there are not. As recently as 2018, there were thirteen participating veterinary clinics that participated in our spay and neuter in Pasco program. We are down to four, both due to increased cost of resources, corporate clinics buying out local clinics, et cetera. So this project is really focused on two major things. It's to build a state-of-the-art veterinary clinic that will support preventative veterinary care for our community members and provide spay and neuter services for a much-needed service. A couple of great things about this project, four major things that it has going for it is, one, it is the voice of the customer. This is not something Mike and I came up with. This is something the community has said they need. Two, we partner with facilities management, and the design is done. It's ready to go. It's a beautiful building. Three, once again, it is something that the community absolutely needs, and we are ready to, with increased revenue offset about seventy-five percent of operating costs for this new, for this new project. So.
Do you have any pictures of it?
I.
I've never seen.
Did you send you pictures, Rob? I don't know if we sent you pictures. I would happy to get that to you. We have artist renderings. They are absolutely beautiful. So sorry we don't have those today.
Okay.
Yes. But we'll send them over to you. They're very pretty.
I, I know the sheriff has a something. I'm trying to see if I could see it from, he's got some kind of kennels. But ours, ours would be a little different than that?
Yeah, so it's not going to be additional kennels. It would demolish one of the current administration building out at the shelter, and it would build a new veterinary clinic. And the second floor would be replacing those offices in the administration area.
And when, how old is the current building?
Ooh. That's a question for Andrew. Probably sometime in the late seventies, early eighties.
Yeah, it's pretty outdated.
Here he comes. You got an answer, Andrew?
Yeah. The test ran.
Yeah.
It was in the eighties.
Yeah, it was in early eighties.
And our staff has grown so much, we don't have office space for them.
Yes.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
So I had been looking a little bit, but so, so those two awesome rescues that you had done, we kind of relooked at those bets, so been a little bit. The, I think it was a blue building off to the side. Is that the building's going to get torn down?
No, that is building C. That's still our intake building. And those kennels, you actually saw when they freshly got renovated, you came out to the, that building is still in use. It would be in between the new adoption center and that building. That area right there would get leveled, and then a new building would be built. It would actually help as well. Part of the design is to better connect all the buildings, so with inclement weather, hot weather, we aren't taking the animals out. We can actually move them from building to building around the property indoors, which would be nice as well.
Are we over-engineering this thing like we do all our buildings?
That's a loaded statement, sir. I would, I would say that we're, we're building within current design standards and what's required. So Andrew Baxter can talk about it, and I don't think we're overdoing things, trying to keep things within municipal standards.
Correct. We, first, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. We, we follow our facilities master plan design guidance as sort of the preliminary base level of design. And so that kind of stipulates what our, what we're aiming toward as, as a governmental building. Traditionally, Pasco County had been building very, very cheaply, and that was represented in our building stock, which was a lot of Butler buildings, a lot of metal buildings, had no real architectural influence, just, just basically square footage. What we, when we started the facility master plan, that started to lead towards some more architecturally styles. Also, it increased, you know, not, not necessarily, it increased the, the length of the building's lifespan is really what it did. And so I don't, don't believe we're over-designing. We are designing to a standard that was established and that was agreed. The facility master plan was something that the board.
But, but Andrew, I mean, I essentially, I think what the commissioner's aiming at here is, one, you're looking at life cycle cost.
Correct.
For the facility, right? So there's a balance there between over-engineering and, you know, doing something that, that affects a particular life cycle. And then, of course, making sure that the, the architectural finishes are.
Taj Mahal.
Reasonable. The, in fact, what we're, what we've aimed for in this particular design, as it relates to this Animal Services Building, is to make it blend in with the existing structure that's already there as part of the Adoption Center. And so basically, this is, this is an extension of the Adoption Center. So it's picking up all of the architectural cues from the Adoption Center and carrying those across into this additional, additional Animal Services Office and also the, the spay and neuter clinic. I think if you saw the pictures, you'd be impressed.
Well.
And you'd say, okay.
I'm a big functionality guy. Clean, safe place to work, appropriate place for these animals to stay and do it. A good job.
Yeah.
But nothing crazy. I mean, because, look, there's no secret. I'm on a mission to get sidewalks for our kids, to get to them from school safely. And if I'm looking at stack rating the priority of animals that are in a shelter, or our children who have to go to school every day, I'm going to pick our kids and sidewalks. So if there's, and find a way to save money on a good, functional, clean, safe, professional work setting by taking the frills out of it, and you have what you need, not necessarily what you want, and then we can capture money to build sidewalks for our kids, which we need to get them to and from where they need to go safely, then that's kind of the lens I view projects like these through, was not kind of it is.
And I think if you, once again, I apologize, we didn't have the, the photos today. A lot of the internal design was designed on partner organizations that have been successful at doing this across the state. We've visited Jacksonville, we've visited Sarasota, Tampa, high-volume clinics that are not frills, they're not private clinics, they're not private veterinary clinics. They're high-volume, either municipal or SPCA shelters that are designed at high-volume preventative care for animals in the community.
Ms. Chairman?
Is this, just, is this, did we ask for this last year? This bill?
No.
I think it's been on.
This was not, this was not on, on our priority list last year. There were some, some private entities that were interested. We, we have reserved a match in our, in our budget for next year for construction. I do recall the board directing us to advance the design of the facility, which, which we did so, and that's how we're able to have those, those, a shovel-ready project, essentially. You know, does the board want to make this its, its priorities, or, you know, have the private entities continue to, to push? And if it happens, then we've, we've got the money for it. It's really kind of.
Now, is this building in the same location as the main building now?
Yes, it is. Yes, it would be an extension of the existing Adoption Center.
So it'd actually be added on to the building you have there now?
Yeah, right now, the three separate buildings are that. They are separate. What part of this project would do would be to connect the buildings, essentially. Yeah.
Okay. I need to try the important board here, the rest of the appropriations requests, and then we can balance the totality.
Right, okay.
Well, I want to say.
Mr. Mariano?
I'll stand this a little bit. By the way, I want to, I want to say, Michael Spencer, you guys have done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Absolute phenomenal job, what you're doing. I appreciate everything. They recently did a big project on a green key where they caught so many cats, it was tough to like, take them all in, get them all taken care of, et cetera. So there's definitely a need for what we're trying to do for this. I'm going to say this, and I think it's back to design, back to how we're spending our money, what we really need compared to what we really want to see. And I appreciate architectural flair, et cetera, but we've got to get down to basic, basic costs. If, if I've got to go hire specialty contractors to go build some of these things, like some of the fire stations we built, I get specialty guys out there, they can't get, hire regular people to go do this work, we got to change that. I got to get the functionality every step of the way.
It's very basic.
So again, so what, so whatever this may be, as long as we get to that, that does look basic, though.
Yeah, that looks pretty.
But we need to just get, get to the lowest construction cost we can get that still works a building and, and gives it a long life as well.
Um, Ms. Chair, can I speak?
Uh, yeah.
Uh, this has, I mean, fifty years, and we haven't taken care of our animals. Any time. It's one of those kick the can, kick the can things. And I will tell you, there are people in the private sector who've done a lot of work, because they asked us to help them last year. And they, we, we did it. And, but I asked them to go, I said, you're going to have to go deal with the legislators and get legislators and get them on board, and they have done that. And they've worked hard. And I think this is the year where we've got to, we've got to take care of this, you know? It's not the, it's not, it doesn't come to mind to a lot of our residents, but it's just something that is part of our responsibility. And, and I think, I think we do have legislative support to get this done.
But the fact of it is, Mike, when did you come here?
Two thousand thirteen.
Yeah, it's been talked about.
Two thousand thirteen.
Two thousand thirteen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I've been here since sixteen, so I can tell you this, there have been a lot of changes since Mike came and for taking care of the animals here in Pasco County for our citizens. Had a lot of changes, a lot of good works going on. And basically, we, we need this in our county, and we need to take care of the animals the right way. So with that.
So I just want to say, when I toured the facility, I was super impressed. You guys do an amazing job. The other thing is, our county's growing, but not our animal service, so that's an issue.
Which grew, and it just didn't have enough room.
Right. So I, I agree with being able to expand and keeping it basic, what we need, not what we want. And also, I think your, your vision is right on, because I, I spend a lot of time there, because I'm an animal nut, but, you know, keeping, they're working on trying to keep these animals in their homes by helping provide food and services and coming to them, which is super important, because then it lessens the load on the shelter. So I, you know, I, I totally support it. But again, just.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So you all don't have to make a decision right now. We have twenty-two other funding initiatives we need to go through. So let's take your notes there, and then let's see, let's get through these other funding initiatives, and then we can have this discussion and try to whittle them down. Next one up.
All right.
Andrew, come back up. Uh, Facilities Management.
What project?
This is the.
This is the biggie.
Public Safety Operations Center, okay. So again, Andrew Baxter, Facilities Management Director. There should be a slide deck that I sent.
Yeah, I, I have to leave your.
It was one of the emails that says, updated.
Twelve fifteen. Forty to one, forty.
What's wrong? All right.
So.
Twelve thirty.
There we go. So the Public Safety Operations Center is another one of the projects that's being proposed this year. Next slide, please. Okay, I got control. So this is similar to other public safety operations centers across the state. Here's a few that, just when they were completed, Seminole to Hillsborough County, Hillsborough being the most recent. We just toured Hillsborough.
County, Hillsborough being the most recent. We just toured Hillsborough about right before the hurricane, so call it two months ago. And they are already saying that they are under design for expanding the facility.
How come Pinellas is not on here? I thought Pinellas was newer.
Pinellas was, Pinellas is, is another complex that we have visited recently. I just didn't add it to this list. This is not a comprehensive list, just a sampling. But what we're basing this off of is similar sites across the, across the state. Where, what we currently have is one of the oldest EOCs in the state with a population of over 200,000 people. We also would include the Emergency Communication Center, the Fire Rescue Administration, Transportation Management. Those are also some of the, what I call the building blocks of the PSOC or the Public Safety Operations.
And this would be in land legs?
It would. The next slide will have an idea of where that will be. The traffic operations is anticipated to be about 10,000 square feet, 911, about 20,000 square feet, media relations, PIO, briefing rooms, et cetera, another 15,000 square feet within the facility. The EOC and the Emergency Management Offices, about 30,000 square feet, Fire Rescue Offices and Admin, 30,000 square feet, a grossing factor, just common spaces of about 15,000 square feet, restrooms, hallways, things like that. And then a warehouse would also be part of this facility as well to store emergency items. And that's about a 30,000 square foot warehouse.
So these rooms for the different departments, they're, they're going to be, they're occupied that all the time?
Yes. This, this would be.
So they'll be moving out of wherever they're at now?
Yes. So Fire Rescue is currently at the Hap Clark Building. They would move into this building. Where 911 is currently, you know, on the west campus, they would move into this building. The current 911 building might be as a fallback PSAP, Public Safety Answering Point. But that might, this will be the primary office location for these groups. So, oops. This is the site where we're proposing to locate this project here on the campus. And then you can see the total building size would be about 150,000 square feet with the warehouse, a total design cost of 23,000. We already have a federal grant of three, 3 million, right, 23 million.
23 million or 3 million?
23 million for total design cost. The federal grant that we currently have is 3 million. We're asking for a federal ask of another 16 million, and the legislative ask related to this project is 4 million. And then ultimately, we do have a construction cost estimate, very rough, of $145 million right now is what we're looking at. This is a.
On that, on that federal ask, yeah, on the federal ask, was that in the last year's and we're just waiting to see?
No, we did ask for 3 million last year just for the kind of the conceptual piece, which we are taking forward. It'll be at the December Board Meeting. And so that's helping to, to start to move that forward.
Okay.
Yeah, the strategy here is just to get as close to shovel-ready as, as we can make it and then ultimately, you know, try to push with the state and the feds to get additional dollars. So very thankful to Congressman Bill Larrakis for getting, getting, carrying the water on the 3 million to get us started on the, on the EOC portion of the design, which as you know, we desperately need after these past two storms. And there's some stuff out there brewing now. Our EOC is currently not even rated, you know, beyond a cat free. We're in a flood zone. We made considerations to evacuate the EOC at one point during Hilton when we were doing our business planning. So ever since I've been in this, in this position, you know, we've, we've had three named storms every year. I think this is going to become the normal and we do need to kind of step it up.
Again, this is not a, a building that you want to build cheaply. This is a building that needs to be built to CAT five levels. And so there is a, there is a higher cost to that.
Right.
But that is a requirement for this type of facility.
This will be a multi-story building?
This would be a multi-story building, yes, sir.
And I think there's certain benefits to, to co-locating emergency services in one place. You know, we, we already, you know, have, have great relationships with Sheriff and Fire and working together. But, you know, we're fairly fragmented because of just kind of how our facilities, our county has grown. And so we've grown where we can in certain places. But co-location certainly helps with coordination and efficiency of operations.
Yeah. How long before this would be, come to fruition, if we got all the money?
So if we had all the money right now, today, design would take about 18 months to two years with a project of this scale and scope. And then another two years for construction.
How much, how much money does it take to get the engineering going to do that for the 18 months?
The, the 23 million is what we're, is what the design would be.
Okay. So to even get started, we need to get around about that number a little more to get started doing this.
Yep.
Yeah, we've put about a million and a half of our money into this. We've got 3 million of the feds, so we're, we're moving seriously a bit.
Are we, have we start, are we starting? I mean, are we starting with that money or do we have to wait?
No, we're, we're going to start with the conceptuals, starting December. We're bringing the Board item for to, to move forward the conception.
So it, it takes time to have something as nice as it's going to be and something that will reach out in the future to help us. Because the storms aren't going to stop. They're going, we'll continue getting some type of storms. Hopefully not that type of once in 200 years, but, yeah.
I'm, I'm trying to understand.
I'm almost tired of getting blamed for developing properties because we caused flooding.
Yeah. I mean, education on that.
That was the biggest, one of the biggest things you'd hear around here that that's what was happening. So they forget about this, a 200-year event. Most everything, we always worked on was 100 events for buildings, so.
What is this $10,000 for roads? Isn't the road already there?
That's 10 million dollars.
I'm a 10 million dollar.
It's for site improvements, roads, contingency, it's just the, basically the contingency in the.
Are we going to build a new road to it or are they going to come down that way?
Yes, there will need to be some road network coordination with this to, to.
It'll be off the main road, we're already out there, right?
I'm sorry.
The main road that comes off 41 in there, will the road for this building come off that?
That would be Central Boulevard, which is the long road that leads back to the jail. To the south, right about where the Arrow is, you can see how the property mapped their, kind of narrows down. That's actually where Symphony Boulevard would come up and connect to Central Boulevard. So yes, that's the part of the road project that I'm talking about.
Oh, I get you.
We have to follow our own rules, so we're extending.
Right.
Yeah. We also would want to have two ways into that, you know, it's just part of the designs that you typically have for an EOC.
Total square foot of this facility?
I'm sorry.
Total square feet of this?
150,000, 100, I'm sorry, yeah, 150,000 between the warehouse and the, and the PSOC.
Right, okay.
All right, well, I think we're all in agreement on this, so can we move ahead?
Hang on, yeah.
Hang on.
Mr. Marion, you have a last question?
So what's, I've got a few questions. So what's, what's the land that's needed just for the building?
The land that's needed for the building?
How many square feet?
Well, we're, how many acres? Or is that what you're asking?
Just, yeah, the footprint of the building itself.
The foot, well, that's really depending upon whether it's one story or whether you have multiple stories. It's really, we haven't gotten to that. We know with what we're looking at and the land that we're envisioning where this would land, it would be a multi-story building.
Okay, so for a multi-story building and where you envision this, how much land are we talking about?
That is about 25 acres, give or take, in that area that I have kind of circled.
The building's going to be 25 acres?
No, between the.
That's what I'm asking you. What's the building size going to be? What's the footprint of the building?
Oh, well, the building size is 150,000 square feet.
But if it's three stories.
How you do that over multi-stories? You could do that over three stories. You can, 50,000 square foot on.
Commissioner, I don't think we know yet. This is, this will be part of the conceptual design, right? So if it's, if it's 150,000 square feet and it's a three-story building and it's a 50,000 square foot footprint, are you angling at trying to be efficient use of the land and the property?
I'm, I'm looking at the location because this is going to need a lot of improvements. You spend a lot of money doing improvement of land to make it all fit there. I know you want to put it out to the side, but.
Are there other sites that we should consider or that?
I, frankly, I'll, I'll give you two sites that have come to mind. One of them is the site where the old jail is, where the old sheriff's building was. Would it fit there?
Here on this, I'm sorry, yeah.
On the west side of the county, we would prefer not put there because of the, the closeness to the coast.
I understand, but it's still a long ways away from the coast. And I don't think we've had flooding into the property, so I don't think it's a big flood risk.
Is this a concern, Commissioner, or just being where the action is versus?
I, I think it's good to be closer to it as well.
So I think, Andrew, we can, you know, as part of some of your initial conceptual things, you could probably have the A and E do a, you know, a site selection analysis, pros, cons, weigh-in.
Yeah, for sure.
And do that, so we can present that, you know, back to the Board as we undertake, undertake design. I understand, I think I understand.
And the Nottingham partial is another site that could possibly work depending on the extra square footage we have there. So between, to both of those, it's a little bit closer, closer to where the action is, where the service is going to go. Two ways in and out, I mean, I've got an EOC building that, I got one road coming in and out, pretty much. So, I mean, I don't think that's a big issue. I think with all that's been done for all these other buildings and my Pinellas Charlotte was a few years ago, we looked at that building down there, didn't see that on the list, but I'd really like to take a look at where those footprints can fit, see what's been built. I think we can possibly save money if you're going to copy something that's already been done. Like the old theories, I mean, you're still going to deal with these civil, but as far as these buildings, if you just built one, if it's that great in Hillsborough, let's go see if, where it fits.
I've, I've been to the Hillsborough, but they're already expanding.
They're already, they're already, the one in Hillsborough also doesn't have the features that ours is, is just good to have. They don't have 911 set up the way we have 911 set up. They have a backup 911 center there, which has about maybe 20 call stations. But we, we're, we're going to have many more than that. It'll, it would be more equivalent to like what Pinellas has at their PSOC.
And, and again, so I want to take a look to see what footprints.
I understand. I think we bring the contract back to the Board, we can, we can make sure that that's, that's addressed in the A and E's contract to look at site selection.
I'm not going to make it.
And among, among the considerations, right? So being close to the action, being able to, I understand.
I mean, there's no, there's no question, we need to get it going. No question.
Yeah.
Now it's just, let's, let's go look at where the best location is, number one. Now let's go see the best way to build it, number two, and try to get that number down.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to move any zeros on these numbers right here that we asked for, but every dollar counts.
So, I'm sorry, I had to step out for a second. So does this accommodate both the Sheriff's Office and Fire?
No, ma'am. This is just Fire Rescue. It would accommodate when we activate the EOC.
Okay.
There would be some offices and breakout rooms that would be for the Sheriff's use, but this is not the Sheriff's Headquarters.
Okay, that, that was my, my only comment was after speaking, like debriefing with Fire and the Sheriff post-storm, that they would like something where, when we're activating emergency, they can both be, you know, for communication.
Yeah, that's what this is.
That would be, that would be part of the breakout.
Right. Because they want to be all the same.
You're right.
We need Tico and Duke and all.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, the next group of fiscal initiatives are Fire Rescue. Chief Quinn.
I might, Ralph, Ralph, I have to leave at 12:45 or later, so may have to pull mine out.
Okay.
Commissioners, we'll try to get right in the specifics. I know it's late. I have Chief Quinn here and I have Walter Price, the head of the PAC Committee, and we'll go over our projects and answer any questions you guys have. Chief?
So to start off with, we're prioritizing a, another high-water vehicle. If only storms would impact a singular home or a singular neighborhood, I think if we've seen, you know, we're spread out geographically over the area, we currently have one. We're asking for a second one, which will give us a, a double our capabilities. Secondly, we're asking for a decon truck, which will be a replacement for our decon program. We have our box truck style that we need to, we'll have our, our gear washing equipments up inside as well, which will help expand and continue our, our cancer decon, our cancer initiatives. Thirdly, we're asking for a air vent truck. It's kind of a current need, plus we're strategizing for the future. We have larger warehouses in this county now. We're building more and more. When we have fires inside there, we have to clear out all those contaminants and smoke and, and make those a little more tenable for our operations inside. And that truck will do that. Also operate as a backup air truck to fill our air bottles. And then fourthly, we're proposing a replacement for our heavy rescue truck, which will double our capabilities as well. We'll have one east and one west. There's our specialized rescue team, which is part of our special ops program. And then lastly, we're asking for a match from the county as well and proposing the build of Fire Station Four, which would be the last station that we need to fill our obligation with the GO bonds. It's a very quick, fast presentation, so hopefully Commissioners start to appreciate that.
How much is this vehicle, I ask?
Uh, which one, sir? I'm sorry. So the high-water rescue vehicle, which one?
High water.
The, that's the first one that we're prioritizing, $375,000.
Is that, I saw those funky trucks that FJBC brought in with the big high wheels. Oh, those were neat, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
No, ma'am, those are more gimmicks than anything. This is more of a, we currently have one, a light, medium tactical vehicle is what we call it. It's a, basically it's like an armored personnel that we got from surplus from the military. This is a complement to that, but these vehicles are actually, you know, we did have some pictures.
Is that what, is that what you took Lisa and me to, when we went to the river to get on the boats this weekend?
Probably so, yes, ma'am.
It's high and, and Senator Scott was sitting in there, too?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
You want another one of those trucks?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, that is the?
That's the Acela, the, the high-water rescue vehicle, the one that we prioritize first.
Mr. White?
Thank you. So guys, JJ, so you're asking for two and a half million in vehicles?
Yeah.
And then you're wanting, you're requesting another $7 million for brick and mortar, so that's nine and a half million bucks.
Count of 11 million.
How do we get there? Like, you got Walter's side of the house, your side of the house, like what's, what's attainable, do you guys think, in your expert opinion?
Walter has done a ton of research and, and I'll let him get up here. What I will tell you is, we put our list together of priorities and we thought the fire station was going to be, first off, it's an obligation. We did a GeoBond in 2018. We're out of money. They ran out of money. We told the public we would build this. So we're trying to go to the state and say, we got a 50%, we have a 50% match. But when Walter did the research, last year alone, the state funded 11 fire stations around the, the state. So.
Newport Richey was one.
That was going to be a question I had.
All right, so Walter can get up here and talk about it, but I'm not saying we necessarily need to submit all these, but this gives Walter the ability to go to maybe one legislator and get them to buy off on the high-water rescue vehicle. I will tell you, being out at Sea Ranch, like during both storms, I was out there and at one point, we had to go fight a fire and we were kind of unsure if they can get through and we could, you know, wash out a million-dollar fire truck, right? So, and we did plenty of rescues and we were waiting for boats. If we had this type of vehicle, and I think Ralph's going to pull up the picture, we would be able to do rescues a lot sooner and a lot more efficiently than we currently offer.
So it sounds like you have what you need to make this sell.
I think so.
Mike Moore behind us.
I'll let that, I'll let the PAC chair.
Mike Moore got a fire station last year for a cousin of Pasco County, so we already have some expertise in the room for the station piece.
How much did he get?
The whole station.
How much was it?
Let Walter go first.
We're talking about Newport Richey?
The fire station.
It was 1,120,000, I believe.
1 million? And they're asking for 7 million?
No, they're looking.
That was for, basically their construction project for Fire Station Two.
Yeah, Mike Moore, yeah, they had a pretty big match. All right.
Um, just Walter Price, Chair of the PAC, for your records, in a nutshell, there was about $51 million awarded to the state, cities, towns, villages, worth of money towards fire-related apparatus, stations, training centers, SCBA's. The vehicles that we're asking for, they're all necessary to help promote us to the, the level that we need to be so that we're not trying to always depend on other outside agencies to get to us in the need of an emergency where we have the capability of doing it all here quicker. I honestly, you know, if, if these are submitted separately, I have no doubt that I can get sponsors on both houses. sponsors on both House and Senate side. And the vehicles we're asking for a hundred percent, we're not asking for any matching from you guys. I just need you to help me be able to facilitate the avocation of getting the sponsors that I need. The majority of them don't want to touch it unless you guys are on board.
I was going to say something real quick. I wouldn't propose a hundred percent funding on any of our projects. We have matching. If you don't submit it, you're going to have trouble, especially in the House, without any matching funds. I just want to preface that when you make the decision.
And Walter, you haven't seen the list, the sheriff has just put in.
Let him finish, let him finish.
I know, but they're asking for the same thing, and more. They're asking for more of the same kind of thing, so I'm hoping to find some way to share.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know what the sheriff's asking for, I don't, I don't know if they're asking for a heavy vent truck and a heavy rescue truck, I, I don't see that.
They can't both be in the same vehicle.
Um, they may be asking for separate vehicles that are unrelated to the ones we're asking for.
Uh, same kind.
Okay. Either way, you, you, you ask for what you can, and if you only ask for one thing, and it doesn't make it to committee, then it's done, and then you're just out. You, you might as well ask for everything that you want to ask for and see what we get. I'm just asking if you guys submit the paperwork, and I'll take it from there.
Ralph, um, you asked me as part of my legislative ask to put one of these on there, and we did, which one was it?
No, I thought it would be one that you might want to consider, but, you know.
But I remember which one it was.
Either one of these would be fine, I think, out of the vehicles that they needed, but they prioritize them, one, two, three?
Is that, are they in priority?
Yeah, they prioritize them. And again, I think if we, if we're showing that we have support, if they're going to work on getting those, you know, sponsors, but you got to understand, if you make it that, then we know this would be money coming to Pasco, we would not be competing against each other. Where the concern has been, is if they put in as a separate ask, that may be funded, and then the legislature says, well, we funded something for Pasco County, but you didn't have it on your priority list. Either way, I think if you were to select one or two of these projects and move forward with it, uh, being on your list, we're on the same page. You're holding hands with them and, and saying, yes, we think this should be a priority for us.
On that, on that note, I should say that, based on Mike's direction, we sat down with the union to come up with our priority list. So we are going lockstep. The high water vehicle is our number one vehicle request, and we're trying to help the county on the fire station and getting the state to pitch in to what a fire station would cost. So that was our.
So if you remember, last year, we had our funding projects, we ended up with two projects funded, uh, one was vetoed, and then, uh, there was a separate, uh, issue put in for the radios that was funded and then vetoed, or?
Or not included, right? Not included.
A, a question on the, um, water rescues. So you're doing water rescues, and the sheriff's doing water rescues. How do you guys divvy these up?
We, we do them concurrently, we do them together, we team up, we'll put our team along with their team and unify the forces. I'd like to put out, during Helene, we were able to handle pretty much ninety percent of all the rescues in-house. During Milton, we were able to handle pretty much sixty-five percent of the rescues in-house. And that was just with the one vehicle that we have currently, which unfortunately went down during Milton, and with our boat supply. The sheriff's asking.
But didn't we get resources in from other agencies?
It's the timeliness, Commissioner, in, in the events when the, you know, when the winds subside immediately, as you recall, hundreds and hundreds of calls that were on delay, and, and so it's, it's getting back out there. I mean, I, I definitely am supportive of the high water vehicles, I think that those are, are very, very important. We, we ruined a couple of our own public works trucks, you know, just, just going into some of these things that weren't designed for it, but they, we were still able to, to, you know, save lives. So I think, I think that that's important. I do think it is a sort of an immutable fact that we, we do, when we do make these asks, we do need to be prepared to have a match. I, I think that those, I, I think that sweetens the pot a little bit when it, when it comes to that. I will ask, and I, I don't know, and maybe our lobbyists or somebody, when it comes to the fire stations, are those fiscally constrained? Sean, I'm sorry, are those in fiscally constrained counties, or are we?
I, I just want to be very, there are some that got outside of it. The governor's office has made, very much made a criteria that most of those that you heard about go to fiscally restrained counties and fiscally restrained cities. There are some outside of it. I just want to say, look at these projects. Also consider Senator Ed Hooper as a former fireman, you know, so these would be, you know, some good projects, you could think of one or two, but I also want to say, very, very few projects ever get fully funded. And some of them won't even get past its first committee if there's not a local match, so consider that when you're making that decision, and the others.
And I don't think that's necessarily be a problem, because I think these are things that we've identified that we need, and that eventually we, we will have to find a way to fund them, which, which means making the match is probably not going to be a difficult endeavor for us, so.
Mr. Chairman?
I, Vice Chair, go ahead.
So I've got, I've got a crazy idea. First of all, I'll say I think it's good to submit for all of them, okay? If we get one with six, then great. But I was just online thinking, all right, so we, we've ruined trucks going through trying to rescue people. How many of you people have ever gone on a duck boat tour at one of these major cities?
Yeah.
You have a vehicle that drives along?
Yeah.
Vehicle goes along and comes into water?
Yeah.
The wheels flip up, becomes a boat?
Yeah.
Goes all the way out. I think as far as rescue vehicles, have you guys been on those?
Yes, sir.
Could that be a type of vehicle that would actually work for you?
Unfortunately not.
Just for rescue, just for rescue now. You're going to get someone who's like hanging on, on a palm tree, hanging on the stop sign, you got to go down that road, it's eight feet deep.
It may be for a collection of patients once we bring them out, but not for the initial rescue, they're not designed for that, and unfortunately, they're not full wheel drive, their, um, their water traversing capabilities, you, during Helene, we had difficulties because the wind was still blowing twenty, thirty miles an hour, and that boat and a twenty, thirty mile an hour crosswind doesn't handle like it should, especially for a rescue vehicle, unfortunately.
What if it's calm? And you go ahead, you're going down the river.
Conditions during a disaster, maybe, yes sir, but.
I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking as far as.
I know, I know, but I think we've got to stick with what they know they can use during a rescue.
Well, consider, consider this.
I'm trying to keep us moving.
All right, well, I want to have a discussion. This is, this is big stuff, this is, we've set this up for the whole year. I mean, I set the whole day aside for this. If you have something like that, if you could use it in certain times, if I could maybe use tourism money to go buy the thing, and you could just use it during a storm of it when you need it, could be something could use.
Possibly. I, I don't know the specifics of their capabilities, but just looking at them offhand, I would question it, but we're certainly something we can explore.
I mean, to, to get to water when someone's stuck out, especially down these long runs like down to Gulf Harbors, down to Sea Ranch, you can't go down a roadway, now you got a straight shot to go. I, I think it's doable, and I think if we actually wanted to look at it, the price of them, I just looked them up online, they're only like four hundred and eighty-five grand. Not a lot of money. So I'll just throw that out there. But I do think we should try to get all the stuff.
And I would just say, we brought forward a list with the prices. There's a strategy decision to make on the match, so if, if our experts say we should have a fifty percent match, then I would say, put all these in at a fifty percent match, and if we get two or three of them, then it's like getting one, right?
Chair.
For price. So that, that's where I was. Or that, the direction we went. So that was going to be my strategy question. With the, with the total ask of nine and a half, depending on how far you guys go, the questions you get, what we can be prepared for to say, yes, we're in on a match on one, two, three, four, five, yes, to a fire station. If there's any, nay, budget constraints to what they can go fight for and advocate for is what I was trying to, to get to. That way they know where to spend time or not spend time. So I guess we need to be prepared for a match of some level for each one of these items, and know how far we can go, that way they're just not wasting their time.
Don't say something that we don't have a match for.
Yeah, just in case. But I appreciate Walter and J J and Chief the, the work and, and thought into this. We just, I want to make sure that we give you all the ability to go get something and not just say yes on paper, but if there's a, a financial obligation that we need to have already, that you can pull out of your pocket and say, yeah, we've, we've got that ready, if that's your ace in the hole, or whatever, whichever.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Something to keep in mind, though, we could be get, trying to get state money and trying to like work on the match, and we don't have to fully disclose where the match is coming from at this point. We can go federal too. Once we get state money, we can try to get, get it from the feds. Nothing wrong, we did, we did it last year.
We got some money from the feds for fire rescue?
We got, what did we get?
Uh, we, we got A F G grant money, uh, last year.
What did we do with it?
And we have a submission in for this year for the safer grant. So we keep fighting for federal money.
And we're going to help you with that.
We've been up there, we'll be up there again.
Right, and, and obviously last year, there wasn't a public safety submission after this meeting. And we wanted to make sure we fight and make sure public safety is a category that you guys put a priority in.
Absolutely.
Because you're going to have very important projects behind me, and, and you had some in front of me, that are roads and, and sidewalks, and it's all very important. But there are some low hanging fruit with public safety, especially with the appropriations.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
One of the things to keep in mind too, I mean, our sheriff's office travels, our fire people travel, we helped a lot of other catastrophes around. Panama City, they keep thanking me every time from going up there, right? So we can, we can also say is, if we get this, we're willing to go and serve where, if there's another disaster somewhere else, so that it takes less stress off the state too, to have to go buy another one, we're, we're going to be there if it's not hitting us directly, we're willing to go help like we've done for years. And I think we've got a great reputation for that.
I had, I had a point, but I don't remember it anymore. Okay, all right, so.
Thank you.
All right, Ralph. So Mr. Chair, to your point, you had asked, um, I think we're good on this, where we're going to decide now is, I do not have an end time for today's meeting. Good discussion, but we still have more issues to go through. Again, we're not ranking as of right now. We can continue on, we can break. I don't know where the commissioners are and what you thought the time ending was, but we can continue on and try to get through all of our projects.
The morning meeting, I'm trying to see if I can move my appointment, but, um, I am not going to miss it.
You have an appointment too?
Yeah, and it's one thirty on the other side, but I'm trying to move it later. I had this down from nine thirty to twelve.
We can also.
Go as far as we can.
Yeah.
Uh, we can also bring a regular item at, you know, the December tw- tenth meeting, but.
Right, we can finish up, uh, we don't, again, we're not prioritizing, we can maybe come on like, uh, like the county administrators said, at our next board meeting, or continue and have those issues brought up each board meeting until we get through the list, until we can get it done. But just so we are able to pare it down for December sixteenth meeting is what we need to do.
We got, we have nothing yet.
So let's keep moving on then, and go to the next group, how about that? Okay, so let's keep going on, the next group is Parks and Recreation.
Hello, so we're on a tight timeframe, so for the sake of time, I'm going to follow the chief's direction and be fairly concise. This project was, um, highlighted back in July when some representatives from the city of Date City, there are a couple commissioners came and talked about the joint use project that we were doing with them. They are in the process of planning to expand one of their older facilities. The Park's capital plan also identifies a recreation complex and expansion at Burke's Park. And then in all those discussions, I was hearing the need for, um, a shelter on the east side of the county. So we got together, Commissioner Oakley, you're very familiar with this project, and we agreed to, um, that's not the right map, Clay. Thank you, sir. Yeah, we agreed to kind of collaborate and see if we could find one location, one building that would be multifunctional, um, and so basically that's kind of what is on the table right now. We have enough money to enter into designs, as a matter of fact, we have a meeting this afternoon to start that process in terms of contracts. We're basically looking at a forty million dollar total cost. We can do a ten million match with park impact fees, and we'd be requesting thirty million. And again, it would be a, a joint effort amongst multiple agencies.
What'd you say the total cost was?
Forty. Forty.
Yeah, because I only remember we were talking about a twenty million.
Sounds like a Taj Mahal.
Yeah, so, I, that, my notes had twenty-five, and I think Andrew and I were just talking about this, but I'll, I'll let him elaborate.
I never knew it went to forty, so that's kind of used me, because we were talking before, and it was always talking about twenty million dollars.
I think what we had talked about was twenty and twenty, but now what, what I see here is a ten million and a thirty million, um, with a ten million dollar match. But, you know, we can adjust that to be whatever the budget is for this facility. I would say that building a Fasano-like facility, um, because that's what we're talking about, but elevated to be gymnasium height.
Right.
Is going to be a costly building, you know, that's a cat five building again. These are costly facilities.
Well, I was always talking about a cat five, and the twenty was where I thought we were at, but, yeah.
So remember, it's, you know, specs, the, the hopes is it's fifty thousand square feet with an aquatic facility that would be located in the east side of the county, because we do not have.
Maybe we have to wait on the aqua, aquatics.
Knowing that. This would be a total.
We can go out, reach out for the Olympics women pool, we were talking about it here, a basketball court housing the, uh, one of the three offices of V A, which V A is on there now, would take their builder down, but house them in ten thousand square foot of this building. And then have meeting rooms and, uh, area there for, for us to have meetings other than in this building, so.
It's, oh, but it's forty million dollars.
It's all right, I got everybody lined up, so. Probably talk to them, so.
We're lined up too.
I hope the governor's good, I hope he's happy with this forty million dollar building.
Well, not just the building, but the entire site and the complex.
Oh, I know, I know, but.
Yeah. All, all of the other ancillary things.
I'd, I'd like to hear from our lobbyists, on, on a forty million dollar.
Our, our delegation is bringing this forward regardless.
Okay, do we have the twenty million?
So, yeah, so the project is identified in the Park's, uh, capital plan that the board approved, so we would need to figure out a creative way to.
Because we cut our budget in the Parks Department.
Well, this is capital, so this would be coming from.
We still have to operate it once it opens.
That's correct, but.
So where's that coming from?
Well, that would be a discussion that we would have to talk about.
That'll be a business plan initiative, we can handle all that at that.
Typically, we work with L and B and county admin to phase the L and M, and as long as we know when the actual construction date's going to happen.
You got to remember that this is more than just a building, it's more than a rec, it's, it's a shelter in a rural community in Pasco County, and can be a regional shelter to help those nearby in the Tampa Bay area, besides the people on the east side of Pasco County.
Yes, sir, I'd also like to clarify that the city of Date City is also under, uh, the condition, if we partner with this, that they would be sharing in the cost of the maintenance and the operation of the facility as well.
And the, so they would be putting in capital money as well?
They would also be putting in capital as well, yes.
They have, they have some money.
That local match of twenty million isn't just from us?
This is most, this is from us, but we're waiting to actually get confirmation on what the city of Date City could contribute.[1641.85] what the city of Dade City could contribute. If I recall, it was slightly over a million at this point in time.
Right.
Ooh. Sorry.
You're talking about Dade City, then?
Whatever.
Right, but the fact of it is, um, Randy Maggar has it number one on his list, Brassy, Danny Burgess has it on his list as number one.
But did they have it at 40 million or 20 million?
Ed Hooper's interested in, in looking at it in their list. Uh, Wilton's also looking at it, but you, you can gain, and even, uh, Gus Bill Racus is looking out for some grants for us for this property.
That'd be good with the BA part of it.
So, so everybody's, I've spoken to everybody, and they're pretty much all on board. Now, I just heard the 40 million today, which I thought it was 20 million before, but that's alright.
Okay, um, what's the other one?
So the other project is, um, it's, we go to that map. So, we, the Parks Department controls, um, three, well, not officially controls, but Magnolia Valley is a proposed location for a future district park. Um, we have Mitchell Park, we have 10 acres through concurrency that we're able to secure at Newport Corners MPUD, and then we have the, um, I guess, the, the hopes and dreams that maybe Mag Valley could be turned into something in the future. The problem with all three of those locations is they're not big enough to actually support a district park. So the proposal is, um, is to basically use all of those facilities and provide the Parks level of service in that geographical area. Uh, the problem currently is that Mitchell Park has been in severe need of drainage improvements for probably pretty much since its initial construction.
Yep.
That is spec'd out to be about $8 million, where ultimately, we just have to basically elevate the entire facility, redo the, redo the drainage, redo all the fields, create some stormwater capacity, add a couple fields. And then in addition to that, we would be, which we've never done this before, we propose to put a recreation complex in the commercial setting of Newport Corners and let that kind of serve as an anchor to the commercial entity, uh, and then do something different, not necessarily just focus on community activities, but make it more of a commercial urbanized facility with sports therapy and things like that. So, that's pretty much, um, and I should say that we've been asking that the, the 8 million for Mitchell's been, been requested for multiple years in a row, so, um, but that's it. Do you have any questions?
Well, as much as I love this, I feel that their project's gonna suck up all your Parks money.
Understood.
So maybe this one, we have to punt to next year.
Yeah.
My thoughts, what do you guys think?
Well, I, I just. You need some help over there, you get a lot of soft.
They do, they do.
I mean, you, you get a chance to the 10 acres at Newport Corners to go take, let's say those two or three softball fields over at Mitchell.
Mm-hmm.
Go bring them all over there, go build instead of having just the three, maybe make it eight, where they can do a functioning restaurant, kind of like the, a sports complex could do with a restaurant between, so that can actually fund all your millions.
I, I love it, but the reality is, we can't fund every, put, ask for everything.
To point of clarification, so there is a local match or impact fees for this project as well, it's the renovation of Mitchell that we have zero funding dedicated for, so...
And that would've, we would've had...
And not, not to revisit a painful situation, but that was tied to the MST that we discussed in previous board meetings.
Yes, yeah, but we don't have anymore. And I can tell you, Katie's family backs up, Katie's house backs up to Mitchell Field, and I saw the picture of her sister sitting on the concrete block wall.
It was a lake.
If it wasn't for that concrete block wall, all those houses would be underwater. That concrete block wall has kept the water from going into Cypress, what's Cypress Knoll, what's that?
Cypress Lakes.
Cypress Lakes, so, that, it's a needed project, but...
It's a lot to ask, isn't it?
I, I don't, I asked my le, my, my lobbyist, can we have two ginormous park projects?
At the same time, we need to be asking, in every department we can ask, to reach out for grants. We need to all reach out for grants for everything.
Yeah, we're pretty aggressive with grants that are on the market.
Right.
So I, I just think, as much as I love that one, and it's in our districts, I think we have to wait on that one one year, but it becomes a park priority for next year, if we make that commitment here, to aid the Dade City one, and then next year, we aid this one.
Okay.
Yeah.
So moving on, next.
Thank you.
Public Works.
Um, can I, can I ask a question? Sorry, before Public Works? I've got a gentleman that's been waiting, I've been, the bike ped, Brian Michaels, waiting here for the transportation one, and I, I may have to leave. Do you think we could pull transportation up ahead of Public Works, is that okay?
Trust, please, yes.
I don't wanna keep him from his work all day.
So I'm assuming you wanna bring up the overpass road, or, uh, you wanna bring up the pedestrian overpass at State Road 54 and 589?
Yes.
Nick, this is number 17 on your list?
Thank you, that's the one who got to keep giving up his date.
Good morning again, County Engineer Nick Uren. Tell me, do you want to leave a question?
This is, uh, number 17, this is for the pedestrian overpass, uh, at State Road 54 and Suncoast Trail.
I don't know, so basically, we're saying, it's a capital project, it's on our penny for Pasco sales tax list, the cost has increased because of the schedule and implementation timeframe, and we're short, I think, almost...
2 million, 800.
2.9 million. And so we're looking for the appropriation request to fund the shortfall.
So, so this has been on our, one of our, um, I don't remember the name of the list, for years. Sadly, the, it got delayed because we thought we had to wait for the Turnpike to finish their design at that intersection. There's been multiple fatalities at this intersection of 54 and the Suncoast. Um, and then it, we found out this year, no, we don't have to wait for their design, they just said, we just have to construct it outside of their footprint of where they're widening and improving that intersection. So, when we originally budgeted this out of Penny for Pasco years ago, when, when were we originally supposed to be under construction for this?
The agreement we executed with the state was in 2018, that's when we provided them with the $10 million.
Yeah.
I don't know what the fiscal year assumed at that time for construction was, but I'm assuming that design was, commenced shortly thereafter and construction maybe a year or two following design.
So as, as you guys know, um, Hernando County's bike overpass was built by the state, and Citrus County's bike overpass was built by the state. Um, we had that former commissioner from Sarasota County come and present to us, uh, who now works for, um, um...
Trust for Public Plans.
TPL, they're having all their overpasses built by the state. We end up, our citizens have to pay for all of ours ourselves, so this is our attempt, I would even ask for more, um, to get the state to help us pay for ours, so...
Let's get the state to pay for the whole thing.
I have tried and tried and tried.
Let's do it again.
And if you wanna ask for more money, I'm game for that.
We got appropriations, Chair.
Yeah, so...
His district.
Um, well, I would say at least, let's, Sean, are you paying attention? 'Cause we're about to up our number here.
Okay.
Okay, what did I just say? This is a test? The state is building bike, pedestrian overpasses all over, except in our county. And so, we want help with our pedestrian overpass that's going over a state road. We've had multiple fatalities there, they built the one in Hernando County, they built the one in Citrus County, they're building them in Pinellas County, they're building them in Sarasota County, we can't get help with ours. We're willing to put up half the money, as a matter of fact, DOT already has 10 million of our money.
They have, yeah.
Yeah, which they've been sitting on since 2018, and the whole project got delayed because the state is reworking that intersection, and, and so what could have been built is now, back then, is much more expensive now because we were waiting for them. So, I think we should be asking for more than 2 million, 800, this, I think we should be asking for at least half. And we're paying for the other one all ourselves on State Road 52, and that one's about ready to go to construction, right? Get ready to start on that one?
We're finalizing design, construction, following.
Yeah, so...
Yeah.
Mike Moore, the southern group.
Vice Chair Starkey, if, if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is talk to Rachel Cohn, which is the, in my office, which is the former DOT Secretary, and ask her her opinion on if this should be a legislative ask via appropriation, or if there's, or a grant ask, um, and find the best route for you to take on that. If you don't, if you're okay with that, I think that'd be good, prior to putting it on your Jennifer appropriation.
Okay, 'cause we've got two of them getting ready to go to construction.
I understand. I, I just, I think it'd be a good, uh...
Yeah, I appreciate you.
Do you have a lot of asks?
I appreciate you doing that and getting some more information. So just so you know, what you all decide, that doesn't mean we have a sponsor. We'll have to go before December 16th and hope that the legislative delegation will sponsor our projects. So at the end of the day, you can ask for the world, but I think the legislators are gonna tell you to wake up and say, here's what we'll sponsor, here's what you can move forward, but you're not getting everything you asked for. And this doesn't mean it's necessarily gonna make it to the end of the legislative session. So, we can move on, we can, uh, you know, I, I like your approach, though, thank you, uh, Mr. Moore, for, for that suggestion, we appreciate that, we also, we do have to look at other funding avenues, whether it be federal or grants. So, Nick, you did that one, we appreciate it.
Well, we are, we are, we, we paid for, we have a design, it's, it's pretty much shovel-ready, right?
The 54 project is not, the design is not finished, no.
DOT's not, DOT's the one designing it?
Yes.
What percentage are they at?
I'm gonna say somewhere between 30 and 60. There, there were co, there were coordination issues because...
2018, and there only have 30.
To Commissioner Starkey's point, there was, there was a significant amount of coordination delay that was incurred, because the Turnpike, after we executed the agreement with District 7, said, oh, by the way, we're going to be widening the main line and reconstructing the ramps at the 54 interchange, please don't build your bridge in a place where we will have to tear it down. So we had to figure out, where could we put the piers for the support of the overpass, the pedestrian overpass, such that it would not be in the way of expanded ramp, uh, more lanes on the ramps coming off of the, the Suncoast Parkway, so that it, it could, it could persist when the main line is widened. Now we've gotten that coordination exercise completed, and we're free to, we've cut them loose to go forward with design, but it, it did take a long, we hit a, we hit a big delay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think we take a strong approach, I think we go, make even a full ask. They pay for it everywhere else, we're paying for one already in State Road 52, let's go for the full ask, because right now, with the way the school boards changed their mile to two miles for picking up, I could take all that $10 million and go put in sidewalks to all these schools we need, immediately, rather than waiting, waiting, and waiting. Let's get the Turnpike Authority to do what they should do.
But they, they've got, they'd have to give us back our money, 'cause they have our money.
Yeah, that's why we ask for it back. Well, let, let's go get the whole thing funded. We got child safety in place, we got funding, we can put right to work, which is applicable to the money we've collected, let's go ask the whole thing. You got the appropriations, Chair, it's his district. You got, I think it's Kevin Steele's district, too, correct?
It's Steele's, yeah.
Okay, Kevin Steele, he might be able to help us get federal money. He was backing Trump from the get-go. He may help us up with DOT up there with the feds to get the rest of the money.
So it could be a, um, is it Tiger Grant, what do they call those now? There, there, there are...
It would not be a grant.
Is our...
Yeah.
What's the name of the grant now, the federal grant? Is our...
I can't think of, but it would not be a Tiger Grant.
Yeah.
But there are federal grants.
There might be a bridge grant.
But I think the Commissioner's point is, is pursue grants, and I think anyone, even our legislative committee here, would encourage us to do that.
Sure.
The Governor's Office would expect that.
I, and, um, just noting here on transportation engineering, and I, I get that these are, where we're going for legislative ask, I, I wanna remind you that DOT came to us and asked us to elevate Rangeland and its priority for the Tampa Bay area. Um, and it's nowhere on here, so, uh, it's not listed here, we're not, we, we need, I know we're talking about going for a federal grant on that, the design, but where are we on the route study?
So Rangeland Boulevard, we're completing our route study, should be finished in early 2025, and that's for the portion just east of Gunn Highway over to...
So it takes two, it takes two years when we know exactly where it's going to figure out where it's going? I don't understand.
It does.
Why?
'Cause the design of the new ramps.
No, it didn't say design, it said route study.
No, it, it, route study is essentially...
Route study supports your need for eminent domain if you ever need to, so it's important to have the eyes...
We only need two more pieces for eminent domain.
Doesn't matter, it takes time, and so it's, and it's a federally compliant process as well that we're following, in the hopes of securing federal dollars as well. So, as we've learned even from FEMA, adding the federal component makes it a little more expensive and complicated, but we'll check it out.
But what, what are they studying when there's only one corridor for it to go on? 'Cause you got the park on one side and homes on the other.
You still have to go through the analysis that states that that is the right way, Commissioner, I don't make the rules, we just have to follow them.
Okay.
The reason it's not on the list is because we were asking for larger numbers, and, and that was based on our desire to, to ask for construction funds, so that the numbers were more standard...
Yeah, I'm, I'm not asking it to be on this list.
So, so this is a fiscal year 26 appropriation request?
Yeah.
And we were saying, well, we're gonna be ready for design in fiscal year 26, and we're gonna proceed on that path. We will continue to ask, consistent with our, our lobbyist's recommendation, we will consider, continue to pursue both federal and state grant funds for projects like this. So there's a county incentive grant program that tries to entice counties to spend money on or parallel to state highways, we'll chase that money. There's a transportation regional incentive program funded by some of the, um, Florida Doc Stamp Revenue that is available for regionally significant projects like Rangeland Boulevard, we'll chase that money as well. We'll submit, we'll continue to submit for, uh, federal, uh, US DOT grant funds to sort of buy down our local cost to construct that important corridor. So we're not done, we're, we just didn't think it was, it was right this year.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm not asking for it to be on this list, um, I'm not, I'm, but I'm just reminding everyone, it's a regional priority for the Tampa Bay area for that road, and, and we're gonna soon be talking about how important that is, so, we can't do anything until the design's done.
Mr. Mariana?
So let me suggest this, because of the time constraints we got with transportation we're talking about right now, we get an NPO meeting tomorrow, why don't we carry the conversation on transportation for the rest?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna talk about Rangeland right now.
Right.
And that, that's what I want you to do, so, wherever you guys wanna go now, I'm good.
Should we go back to Public Works?
Public Works.
Public Works. Thank you.
Right, Joseph F. Moore, Assistant Public Works Director of Environmental Engineering, Environmental Engineering. Um, Public Works got three, um, stormwater projects here and one roadway project. We've got a Beacon Square, um, project, pretty much to design and permit stormwater management infrastructure to a bit flooding and improve water quality. Um, this project, we're asking for $350,000 for design and permitting, $2 million for construction, for a total of 2.3 million. Uh, we've got a double hammock north, which is pretty much, uh, a large regional project all the way from Gulf Highlands, Bayonet Point area, Jasmine Lake, all the way draining into the double hammock. Um, this project is an extensive project that is gonna take about 88 homes out of the 500-year floodplain, um, and about 1,500 rows, um, from year, 10-year mean annual storm event. Um, this extensive project is gonna be, um, requiring 1.7 million for design and permitting, about 10 million for construction, so for a total of 11.5 million. Now, and then also, we've got a sea pipes project.
Can we, can we hang on for a second?
Yes.
I just wanna talk about that double hammer for a second, just to give you an idea what goes on.
I moved my meeting, I'm good.
For all the water coming down from Gulf Highlands, working all the way down, it swings around, goes, coming up to Lake Christie, uh, when it gets to a certain point by Glenmore, the water that flows down from, past Jasmine Lake's pineapple, goes down to a certain point, and then water comes from the south, coming back up.
Right.
So we're moving the water all the way south, and then it's gonna go back up north to swing over. Think about a big storm event where you got water flowing one way to another way, that's why we gotta fix this thing. It's, it's a big deal that should be done, how it designed, I have no idea, but this is a fix that, it's, it's, it's important for the area.
Well, there's four Public Works on here, and I think we can pick one, so, someone's, you know, will have to figure out what to pick.
And again, you don't have to whittle it down right now, let them go through and finish these. Also, keep in mind, at the end of the day, on any of these projects, and I think what you heard from our lobbyists, be prepared, we better have a match for these and not ask for full price.
Alright, so for, um, the third stormwater project is for the Seapines Project, entire community. We pretty much, um, combined all the three projects, we've got a Seapines Project, Main, Lafitte Drive, and then, um, what we call Seapines Local. Um, the total, this project is already ongoing, design is almost 90% complete, so we've got about 10% left to finish. We are being held up by the State 404 permanent issue.
Yarmulke.
Yarmulke issue, so that is the only holdup. Um, we've, we've gotten some SWIFMUD funding for this project as well, um, I don't see it reflected here, but it's something we can, we can look at, but definitely, um, this is a substantial project, um, Seapines area floods a lot, as we all know, and this, this And this, this funding or this project, once completed, it's going to eliminate flooding for over, take about 32 homes out of the flat plain. Um, it's a project we've been working on for a long time and it's going to go a long way to alleviate flooding in the community.
So Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
With this one here, it's a three-part project. The last project we found, they got the landowners we need. They're going to cooperate with us. But the first two phases, I think it's like 12 million dollars. It's already been funded, correct?
Yes, yes.
So we're only really looking for six on the project. So we're going to reflect that.
Yes.
So we're almost all the way done with this project, the final phase, which is the most important phase of what we've done out there. Because we picked up the land we needed. It's ready to go. When it's, again, if not for the 404 program, we'd have started two of those sections already.
Right.
But they pulled it out, pulled it out in the last minute.
Do we have Swift Mud? I mean, or is this...
Yeah, we do have Swift.
Are they still working for us, against us, or how's that?
Yeah, they're working with us. I think they understand what is going on with the state 404 issue. So they've been patient enough. So those funds for state more, uh, Swift Mud corporate funding is still available for, for application for this project.
I would love a future project maybe in Trinity to do stormwater. So those, I don't know how many homes are in there, but something to where they don't flood. What's the name, Thousand Oaks?
Thousand Oaks. And I'd say that for that whole thing.
Yeah.
We need to probably do a presentation at some point because as Mike, as you talked about having the Armico come together from when the, from, we had that meeting right here.
Yes, sir.
There's a way to get that water conveyed out.
Yeah, we got to do it.
Like we talked about the other night, Oak Ridge doesn't flood.
Right.
They get canals all the way in. If we get the water conveyed through that Trinity area, like was designed, we can fix all that.
Yep.
And now, again, with the new president, I think now's the time to get that done.
Um, I'm sorry. I, did you skip over number 10? Did you talk about number 10?
Yeah, I did talk about it.
Can, I need to hear that one again.
So this one I do have showing that would be in...
I thought it was in your order.
Right, right. Yeah, so...
And here's why, um, let me tell you why. If you remember and you weren't here last year, Lisa. I did not get a District 3 ask last year. We elected not to. We went with three or four based on the recommendation. So I said, okay, no ask from Starkey last year for District 3, but she's going to get one in this year. So, um, right now I don't have anything. Because we're going to go for, um, the state with that overpass. I have, I have nothing for District 3, so, um...
Yeah, so there, at the end of the day, there's only two projects on the current list that are in Commissioner Starkey's district.
Yeah, so...
The overpass and this one.
I'm now much more interested in Beacon Square. So I need to hear what that is. And this is in, in Representative Jaeger's district. So we want to have something in, in there.
Right.
Because I don't think anything else is, so. What, so what is this?
So no, it's, this is for the design and permitting of stormwater facilities to help abid flooding and improve water quality in the, in the community. Um, pretty much we are going to be collecting, build a conveyance infrastructure to convey the water, um, from the Beacon Square area into a storage pond, attenuate it, and before we release it. Um, it is, you know, we always go through a lot of maintenance. We are, we are confronted with a lot of maintenance issues within the community. So this project will go a long way to abid, you know, flooding within the Beacon Square area. Um, we're asking for a design of, design, $350,000 for design and permitting, and then $2 million for construction, for a total of 2.3 million, 5 million.
So are we putting anything into this? So don't we need to have a match?
It would be best if we'd had a match. Just realize that none of these projects that we're talking about now show us having a match. Although you did say Sea Pines. We do have already a lot of, have already done a lot toward that project. So in reality, we do have a match on that one.
So, so again, some of these projects are already on our list of, we, we have the Stormwater Master Plan that is still ongoing. And we have, we've, I, we have a number of projects that we've listed. Some of these projects here may be on those lists. But right now, um, most of our, our funding that we have in our five-year capital plan is going towards existing projects that we have to complete them. Um, but yeah, so we don't have a matching fund. This project specifically is not prioritized in our storm master plan just yet or in our current five-year program to pursue it, to move forward with it. But hopefully, if we do get, um, the legislative funding for it, then we can be able to proceed with the project.
And do we own the land, do we own the land already? Is that that piece of land, there's some on the one side of the street and some on the other side of the street?
Right. So we're going through real estate acquisition for those that we don't own. And which ones specifically are referring to?
Uh, can you, can someone send me the specifics?
Yeah, I can, I can send you the details, yes. I'll ask.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, yes, sir. So like Beacon Square, like the other projects going through the cooperative funding, you've got to put the project forward. You go to Swift Mud to get the design. It's a small chunk of money upfront. Once you get the design money, then you go back for the next phase and go get the other monies. Like I said, with Sea Pines, you get two out of those three things already done.
I didn't think you could get cooperative funding unless it was, um, regionally significant.
No, doesn't matter. Everything's regional. I mean, literally, you can get this done, but you've got to get the design done first. And that's, that's where you should start.
For, you mean for the Swift Mud corporate funding?
Sure.
Yeah, it's got to be regional in scope.
So how is Beacon Square regional? I'm trying to...
So this is for the legislative ask?
I know. He's saying, don't ask for this. He's saying, go to Swift Mud for this.
Go through the regular process, no?
Yeah, so usually we evaluate it to see if it fits into as a regional, um, project category as opposed to a localized project. At this point, we've not evaluated it to determine, to make that determination yet. But it's something that we can apply for in the future. Now, as we, as it currently stands, Swift Mud is not funding any, um, stormwater flood abatement projects just yet. So we are unable to submit projects for Swift Mud corporate funding at this point.
Chair.
It isn't, it isn't the cooperative funding since when I was on the board, we changed what was done based on the Tampa Bay Water Pipeline Project. So the funding available for the next 10 years is really at the minimus amount because the vast majority of the funds are doing the transmission line project with temporary water. Like all legs of Swift Mud temporary water are in that basket for water supply. So based on the dollar value of this project, it may not even be a feasible look by Swift Mud to say the money's not there for another 10 years or so.
Have they said, have they said there's no money?
It's, it's very, very little. No, no. The money that Swift Mud invested in historically, the cooperative funding money.
It's changed.
We voted to do it. So the projects like this, the board at that time voted to take the bulk of those funds and invest it in the transmission line project in Hillsborough County for a regional water supply project. So depending on like the, the dollar value of the projects that this county submits to Swift Mud, and back me up, Mike, for, uh, CFWI project, it may or may not make the cut because the money's just not there for like a 10-year timeframe.
Yeah, the Commissioner's right. The, the focus of, of Water Management District as it played is to focus on regionally beneficial type projects. That's where they, they have chosen to, to, to do that. So our, our, our ability to compete in the CFI world is not what it used to be, especially for these local type projects, which is why we've adopted the strategy of the master plan and taking that master plan and really what our intent with that is, is here's the list of projects and to look at the stormwater assessment and to potentially go into debt in order to fund, address our stormwater issues.
Yeah, so it changed the way applicants in the district looks at the applications because it really shrunk that pot of money from what historically it was.
I know, that's why I, and so I think they get a lot more picky when they say regional project.
Right. You better be very, very deliberate.
And I don't feel this passes the smell test of a regional project.
So usually when they talk about regional, they're talking about multiple communities benefiting from the project.
And this is not.
Yes, this more localized.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Hey, well, just a minute. Um, this is going to continue on and on. At some point, I've got to break out of here because I have sugar issues. I have diabetes. And I can't continue through lunch without going to have something to eat. And then I've got meetings this afternoon, so I...
I did change my afternoon meeting.
This is taking way longer than what I expected.
So yeah, and I'll, you know, probably could have pared these lists down a little bit better for the board. So I apologize for that. The, I, I, I think ultimately we've, I think we've covered everything except for the utilities item, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
Which is a very big ask. I think that it's, I think that it's important. If the board would like to provide Ralph with any additional feedback individually that you may have, whether that's, I'm not going to ask you to rank them. If you want to rank them, that's fine. Um, but I, I think that, um, I have enough information to where I can pare these down. Um, you know, Sean and I were talking about, you know, look, there's a number of things that we have to consider. There's a number of strategies that we have to employ. And the truth is, it's November, not March, and things can change between now and then. Uh, one thought is, is that we look at our, look at our strategy into sort of tiers, right? That first tier being, look, there's, there's some hurricane and resiliency stuff that, that we probably should kind of group those items in there. There's a second tier that, well, if we didn't have the storms, what would we have asked for anyways? Knowing what we know, right? With who's in what and what's, what's kind of, kind of hot. And then there's kind of everything else. And I think, and I think if we, if we understand that and we can agree on that, come March, depending on how things are moving, we know which cards may be more effective to, to employ. I think this is an unprecedented level of feedback that we've ever had from the board because it's the second time we've held one of these workshops. And, and I think that we've gotten a lot of great feedback. I think staff has pushed a number of great proposals that are all worthy. Uh, but we may not be able to secure funding on, on them either in whole or even partial. And plus, there's a few things that I would like to look at too on some of these jobs um, in terms of, well, what if our match only, what if we only got a 20% state grant? Are we prepared to come up with the other 80%? That may not be true in all cases. So the conversation that has been really, really good and that, that I want to take back with my team to do that. So Sean, I don't know if you or Mike want to add any color to that, but I, I feel pretty good.
I think you're, I think you're spot on. I would have just a couple of items. One, we don't even know what session's going to be like yet. I couldn't even tell you at the next revenue estimating conference if they're going to tell us we're going to be down. I will tell you the one that just happened last month, it was not as high as they had hoped for. They already saw a slowing down. Number two, you've got to look at some priorities. You already have a House Speaker who's already come in and has made a statement unlike any other speaker until Richard Corcoran, who basically said, we think the government has grown too fast, too much in the past two years, and we're going to slow it down. He just came out with that last week. What does that mean? Less funding through appropriations. You then also have the Senate President who says, we have funded water projects wrong. We have done it through leadership process and who's in power, and we think that those grants should be 100% through DEP. Interestingly, but we both said as currently, the, the water, the appropriation projects that you fill out, who are usually out before you even start an organizational session, have not even come out yet. That's given us an indicator. And, and lastly, I would just say, the governor. The Governor's Office has looked at, and he made a huge statement. We had the last vetoes in the budget. He said, I looked at these projects and focused on the way they applied for it. If they did not apply for grant programs where grants are available through DOE, through, um, through DEP, through DOT, he made a huge criteria about vetoing those projects. And I, and I agree. Lastly, I'd have to say, which you just made a huge statement on. I have had clients who've had to return money because they were not prepared to take up the rest of it. And the first question the Governor's Office says is this. Are you able to fund the rest of the dollars and are you able to do it operationally? Those two questions come from the Governor's Office to your staff when they're evaluating that. Uh, I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. And then lastly, I'll say this, and Mike, I think you look at your, your tiers like this. You, you know without a doubt, we're going to have hurricane, you're going to have resiliency, you're going to have, you know, the, the flooding issues are going to be right in there. Transportation's underneath that. And, and lastly, it's going to be the other projects where the parks and everything else. But then beyond that, let's take what we've heard a little bit from your legislative delegation. You've heard Hooper say adamantly, he wanted to see transportation around Eastlake, Trinity area relieved, and he was going to make that a priority. What can we do talking to him to say, we've heard you, but we also see these other areas? So I'll leave you with that.
Wait, Sean, I have, I have a question. Uh, what was said about money going towards resiliency or something? Because of the hurricanes, they were going to take some money out and put that in a pot somewhere?
So we were just discussing that just now. Uh, there could be a special session. Um, we have heard rumors of it. And to do it, you have to get all three of them to agree and pretty much have to agree what you're going to do before you even call that session. So that would be saying, we've got to lump money. We're going to do things for DEP, DEM, and DOT and have that in a special session. And we were both looking at each other going, is that going to be December? Is that going to be January? I don't know for a fact that that's going to happen.
But what's the goal of that?
To fund those projects immediately, not to wait to session.
What kind of, what kind of projects?
I just thought, those that would go through DEP, DEM, and DOT, whether that's resiliency, road projects, rebuilding stuff, that you didn't have to wait for session, which then you wouldn't get the money until the end of the fiscal year and the start of the next fiscal year.
I think it's important to say that they're going to, they're going to look at that globally, you know, with the route reach that was affected. Sorry, they're going to more likely look at that globally, at the whole region that was affected versus more than likely not specific project, hey, I'm Pasco County and I have this one specific project. We don't know for sure, but that's the word I heard.
I mean, I, I don't think we're ready to, if they were to ask us today, what would be our priorities based on that? I mean, look, we have Little Road and 19 go underwater at the same time, two hurricane evacuation routes. I mean, what, we have not talked anything about that here at all. I mean, so we're not prepared if someone are going to ask us.
I would get prepared. You have a meeting with the delegation in about four weeks and they're going to want to hear some of these and they're going to want to hear that. And you're going to have to have those set. We've got to start asking for those requests and doing it around that time.
That's correct.
Just add one more thing too. I mean, you had one specific project, it may have been more too, where they would, it would require reoccurring funds too. That's something you need to look at as well. So if you have a project that's going to cost operationally recurring funds year after year after year, do you have it in your budget or will you have that in, in your budget to move forward with that project as well?
So you're talking about those projects that we're only asking for design? You know, be prepared. If we get that design, we're going to have to go back and ask for the actual construction build. And do we have it worked into our, our, our overall plan to meet that match?
Right. And, and at the end, just be reflective too. Each legislator comes to an end where they have to pick some projects and they, and they get a certain amount. Um, so we're all looking at Ed Hooper, at being able to carry the water. He also represents, you know, Pinellas County. Um, I just want to be very respectful to him and be very, um, and looking at again, going back to that tier level and looking at where it's going to fit in the leadership's priorities. There's where it can fit well for you.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if we have that here.
Oh, yeah, to hear, to tell you how restrictive. For as long as I've been in the legislature, there's been six bills for the House. We just got an announcement, there'll be official, that'll be five. That you can already see, again, he's already saying, this is the House saying, I'm going to see this government restrict itself.
So I think we have a better hand on our policy. We're only looking at a local bill, which does not count towards your six, which is good. And then the rest, we're being supportive. We're looking at others, like the Associate, Florida Association of Counties are doing that. So we really need to do some work to get to the point on the, on these funding initiatives. Uh, have Mike and the team go back and, and let's whittle them down a little bit so we can then get them to you. Our ultimate goal is to have several projects for the December 16th meeting so we can get sponsors from our delegation on what they're willing to sponsor. Um, I think we already know one or two, at least one of these projects that, um, we have sponsors for, that being the, the shelter for, for the Eastside. Because that was a project that was asked for by a Senator and a Representative saying that they would put it in as their top ask.
I mean, they were part of that ask, so.
And I'd like to see these on a map.
We could do that.
Just, just remember to add to that, Ed Hooper, again, as the appropriations chairman, will not be submitting it. It's only you, the two Senators that will be submitting all of your appropriations.
Um, how quickly can we find out about that overpass? If it's a...
Well, I didn't want to interrupt, but I did find out already.
Okay.
Um, if you don't mind, give me one second. So this directly from my team members, one which was a former secretary, one was the most recent, one of the most recent chief of staff. Um, and apologize, give me one second here. So no, there is not any grant specifically for that purpose. Um, but the department will fund them as part of the work program with the locals prioritize it.
Well, see, there, and there we have it. Um, our transportation ask, it's, you know, they don't want it to come out of District 7 when we ask for extra things.
Right. And we make sure that these projects that you're seeing on the transportation list are not on that list. These are county roads that were, that Nick pulled out.
So this is, you know, something that, that we've been, hey, I, I don't know how to proceed on this one to, it's really not fair. I'm just going to say it's not fair, that we have to pay for it ourselves. And, and I don't know how do we make it District 7? It's a turnpike. It's not District, actually, it's turnpike, not District 7. So we don't rank turnpike projects. It's a different pot of funding, right? So how do we?
They're an enterprise, so I would assume so.
That's the presentations we've received from our transportation meetings, yeah, it's a different pot, they're their own thing.
It's, 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 so how do we, can you ask them how we proceed when it's turnpike and not District 7?
I will.
Cause that's not, I don't know how they do their allocations and.
You think that that would be discussed at our?
We'll talk about it tomorrow again.
No, what's that other transportation group we're on? Your chair?
Uh, TMA.
Yeah, that's not really ever.
We're, we're, we don't have funding at the TMA, but we rank.
Yeah, and they bring in.
It is ranked very high there.
Yeah.
I don't know what our next TMA meeting is, but.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Tell me again, um, what counties or what cities did you see that's already done in? You said it was two areas this was already.
Oh, Hernando County got their overpass on State Route 50. Citrus just got.
The pedestrian, over, the pedestrian overpass?
Yeah.
Over the Sun Coast?
Um, yes. Um, Hillsborough County has one, um, that's part of the Upper Tampa Bay Trail.
Okay.
But I'm trying to remember if that's part of the Sun Co, uh, Veterans.
But for sure Hernando.
Hernando, Citrus absolutely got theirs built, funded.
What, what years was Hernando's, that's been quite some time.
When they built the Sun Coast.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was the extension of the Sun Coast up, up that way. They built them in conjunction with the.
Yeah, and I'm telling you, our, our road is traveled, Route 54 is much more traveled than their roads were underneath.
But again, I think that was part of the negotiation when they did the initial bill that they built into it, that the state would pay for their overpass.
So I think I would ask if, if, if it's appropriate here that board members, I guess first and foremost, one.
We may need to go visit whoever's the head of the Turnpike Authority in Tallahassee. We may need to go make, make a visit.
Turnpike Authority is not in Tallahassee, that's in Orlando.
Yeah, well, whoever, and, and whoever funds them, you know how we went to the Army Corps of Engineers in Washington? I feel like we have to hit that level to make our case to help us fund these overpasses, at least one of them.
Okay, I think we can handle that as a, as a side stream.
Yeah.
I guess I would ask if, if board members, if you have any particular feelings on some of these appropriation requests that have come out. Again, think of the buckets that, that Sean has outlined in, in that respect, but would, would love any feedback. You can provide that to Ralph.
Are we gonna talk about the sheriff's letter?
I'll get to that in a second, if you like.
I just have one comment.
The second point I would ask if.
Oh, no.
Is that if there's anything missing, there's things that we didn't address. You know, I've heard Commissioner Waitman talk about sidewalks as an example. I don't have any sidewalks on here. So if there are things that we are missing, I'd like to get some feedback on that.
I definitely think sidewalks, 100%.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, I agree, sidewalks. Yeah, is there a priority list somewhere that, so we know?
We have that, so if the board is interested in sidewalks, we can pull sidewalks.
We're always interested in sidewalks.
You know, I, we can kinda group that into some of these other second-tier things that we, we talked about, right? And, and, and include that, so that, that's fine, we can take that on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So I, so I think a, a good approach could be to try to get that overpass money back to us, and then we say we can take our own sidewalks.
Take it easy for them.
Yeah, I just have to track how we're funding it, and if, if those numbers all work out.
But there's also the bike pad overpass over 54 at Starkey of the Coast to Coast Trail, so.
No, no, I wanna get that too.
Well, we can take that money, uh, cause that is, uh, that money that we have given DOT is penny for, is David Goldstein here?
No.
But Jeff, you know, that money is obligated under the original penny for pass code, and the Coast to Coast was in that.
That was the next question, was where, where that funding had come from. So if it was, if it was penny money for transportation, it would have to go back through the penny process to, to allocate.
Yeah, and, and the, um, since the Coast to Coast Trail, cause we've had this conversation, since the Coast to Coast Trail was in that penny, it can be used along that corridor. That's what David said.
We can, yeah, we.
There's a process though to make that happen, yes.
Yeah. I don't think, we can't just take that money and use it anywhere.
No, no, yeah, we're gonna be looking for sidewalks, and I think a lot of it could fit, and I think we got.
That was for, I don't, I don't think we can, but maybe it just is a cascade as we go down the list.
One last thing, if I could, on the Sea Pines project?
Yes, sir.
I think there's, like I said, three stages, two, two-thirds of our had been funded. If not for the 404, um, for permit, we'd been done. That was something that Simpson and Amber both worked on years ago. So that, that could look a lot better on paper than it does right now.
Yes, sir.
I just have one comment, Chair. And I also think in the next few weeks, like with the new speaker, we're gonna know kind of what his priorities are in the House, and then maybe, you know, we can pivot from there and see if we can tie in some of our priorities.
Yeah, and I think that's consistent with how we wanna approach this, again, putting this in these various tiers. So again, I'll just use the analogy, you know, what part to pull, depending on which direction. Knowing what we know now versus, we'll know more, like you say, in four weeks or, or even a few months too, so. Um, regarding the sheriff's letter, uh, yes, we, we did receive a letter from the sheriff. Um, you know, I, I, again, I'm looking for the letter, I can see the accompanying email with it. But, uh, the sheriff is actually requesting that the board consider these funding items expeditiously, uh, to be ready for one October. So I'm, I'm not even sure that you would have a, a state appropriation and a bill put together in order to do that. I, I read this as, this is a, a look through, through your reserve, so this is an unbudgeted request. I don't really think it's, I mean, some of these things would, um, high water rescue is certainly, we coalesce together with that. But I, I don't, I don't read this as a legislative ask, I read this as a budgetary ask for current year funds. We could take some of the high water stuff and combine that, of course, in our appropriation requests. But, uh, he makes the assertion that this needs to be done and ready for the next hurricane season, so, just my take on.
I do know that the sheriff will be doing their own separate ask, uh, from the legislative delegation. Plus, I, I believe they have two, uh, bills, general bills that they are working on and will be using, uh, our legislative delegation to be sponsors of those. Again, that's their, that's their priority list for their legislative ask, not ours.
Yeah, so this is maybe a better topic for a regular board meeting versus this.
So these are their priorities?
No, that's, that's a list for your all's budget.
That's $11 million to fund as soon as possible. That's what the, that's how I read the letter. So I don't read it as, as, these are things that the sheriff believes that he needs in order to respond, um, to future calamities.
One more thing before we close, just something pretty neat. So President Trump announced a list of advisors, and James Blair, little brother Matt Blair, has been Hill Service Assistant to the President and Deputy Chief of Staff for Legislative and Political Affairs for the administration. That's pretty cool.
I think I asked James to be an aide of mine.
As we go, as we go through this federal process, it's just, you know, we all know Matt Blair, and congratulations to James.
Yeah.
He's earned it in, you know, the Legislative, um, and Political Affairs post, I'm not sure if that's, I'm gonna tell, but we might have an ally there, so that's, that's pretty neat for the Blair family and, and for James, so, good stuff.
Yeah, awesome. And since you brought that up to, um.
The letter. So the, um, Republican, um, Senate Committee elected their next leader, uh, it's gonna be John Thune. Rick Scott pulled out after the first vote, he didn't, uh, uh, get enough votes, so, uh, it was with, there was three, then they ended up finally with John Thune from South Dakota, I believe.
So, should we, so Ralph, should you bring, um, or send out to each of us those items that we didn't actually bring up here today to talk to?
So we're gonna go back, and I think what, what you said was we were gonna maybe whittle the list down, the remaining list. We heard from you all, we'll probably put in there whose districts these fall in, I think we can easily do that. I already did that already on some of these projects.
Yeah.
We weren't gonna add any new ones.
Yeah, I think we, we can take the appropriations request, send it to you, it's in the form of a spreadsheet. If there's any feedback the board members would like to give us individually, we'll certainly take that. I mean, up and to, including if you wanna rank them, great. Uh, if not, that's okay, we're gonna try to break these up into the, into the tiers. You just come back with, uh, you know, we can meet with you individually and see if that passes muster and, you know, and kinda, kinda move from there. Or if we have to do a little more tweaking, we can do that at our next regular board meeting in December, which will still be ahead of the workshop with the legislative delegation on the 16th.
So we did put a, a, a placeholder in there in case it needs to be a regular item, uh, at the next, uh, board meeting, to finish up on these voting decisions.
All right.
But we'll do as much as we can offline, individually, input from you all, and that's how we'll try to do it moving forward, so we can prepare for the next workshop on December 16th.
Cause I mean, that's a long list, I don't know how in the world.
We'll do our best.
Five people to discuss them.
I think we pare it down, Chair, and, and just remembering that flexibility is going to be important, because we don't know what we don't know today, uh, but it's important that we have this meeting, it's important that we got together, uh, to discuss it openly, and that, that feedback is good for us on the staff level to be able to, to tailor something that will hopefully provide us more success, um, you know, this session, with, with the things that we, we wanna go forward with.
All right.
Okay.
All right, this time we'll adjourn.
Well, I, um, I did think there were a lot of very interesting projects on the utility.